All right, I would like to open the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, August 13th, with just a couple of quick announcements and then some updates. My announcements are that this Thursday, the Brookline Farmers Market will be opened with fresh produce, fresh corn and tomatoes, everybody. And again, there will be pop-up vendors at Two Brookline Place in Brookline Village on this Saturday from noon to 5:00 PM. Any other announcements from members of the Board, events coming up? Then I will lead with an update, actually, I will consult with the Town Administrator and my colleagues, Selectmans Goldstein and Waszinski. The B-Space Committee last night took votes on a recommendation to the School Committee to go forward with plans for expanding our school spaces to meet our growing enrollment. And I'm just going to simplify by saying that the Committee has affirmed the continuing of the K-8 neighborhood school model. There were a number of projects that could go forward, and the priority is to the Devotion School project, which has already been substantially developed and is in the pipeline. Some expansion at the Driscoll School to basically totally renovate the Driscoll School. And the possibility of some other expansions in other K-8 locations, which could accommodate classrooms, and also some suggestion that there be townwide programs located in some of the K-8 schools that otherwise, in order to have classrooms there, would substantially affect redistricting. And we were trying to avoid that. And with that, Selectman Goldstein, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, just want to congratulate the B-Space Committee on a very arduous journey. We put a lot of hours in, and there was a lot to talk about, and a lot of very detailed conversation. And it was a very cooperative team, and a team that kept their mind on it and did it with camaraderie and with bringing to bear all their various expertises. So I want to thank Selectman Waszinski, Chairman DeWitt, who were members of that team, and to all the other members as well.
Thank you.
Although we are, I should say, we're not done yet.
No, no, no. Got to write a report, got to write a report, right.
But the report will reflect the vote of last night.
Right, and I'll add that this is only the start of the process. Now, the School Committee has to take the B-Space recommendation and decide what they want to do with it. And then there's the little matter of the override study committee. I'll add one thing, there's been some, there's a Facebook site, and there's been some postings on there today, making some real speculative statements on some of the impacts of the B-Space vote. I think a lot of what's going around is mere speculation, and we don't know. And the School Committee really has to be making some decisions, so I would take a lot of that speculation with a very big grain of salt.
Right, actually spoons of salt, I would recommend.
Could I just add, I want to thank all three of you who served on that committee. I think it was, I think even from a distance, the rest of us could see that it was a tough job, and particularly in this era of Facebook, et cetera, and everyone had their own ideas of what should be happening there. So appreciate your perseverance and patience with the process.
I agree.
Thank you. And I have to say, we did have a good process, and it was done with a great deal of thought, a lot of research and soul-searching, in the end, to make the best possible recommendation. And my hope now is that the School Committee will succeed in taking what B-Space has done and move it forward, and at the same time, that same set of recommendations is going to be thoroughly reviewed by the soon-to-be-appointed override study committee. So it's not over yet by a long shot.
And also, the B-Space recommendations are going to be considered by the School Committee.
Right, it's going to the School Committee first, and then, right. Now, I would like to jump our calendar to the main calendar where we have a fire promotion. Chief, would you like to come forward and let us hear from you?
Thank you, and good evening. Well, as you know, last week I was before you and explained that we had an opening due to retirement in the Fire Department for Lieutenant. We have conducted interviews, we had three candidates left on the civil service list. And firefighter John O'Leary was the number-one candidate on that civil service list. He was appointed to the Fire Department in November of 2004. He holds a bachelor's degree in, from University of Mass, and another bachelor's degree in fire science from Columbia Southern University. He's also an EMT with the department. As I've told you before, when I've come to you with promotions like this, it's not all about the firefighter who's going for it, it's about the family, too. They've had to go through a lot for him to get to this point. He's had to study an awful lot, and he's done that and scored well, and he's our recommendation for promotion, my recommendation to you.
Okay. I think it's pretty straightforward. I can therefore move that the Board of Selectmen approves the promotion of firefighter John O'Leary to Fire Lieutenant. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waszinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And just a footnote, I happened to drive by the site of the big fire that happened on Spooner Road over the past several days, and was astonished to see how close it is to other houses and structures. And I just want to say how fortunate we are that our firefighters got there in time and were able to control that blaze. It could have spread, and I am truly, truly impressed, and I just want to make sure that everybody in the public hears, this is something that was unanticipated and unexpected, and everybody came through, and you have my compliments and my sincerest thanks.
Thank you. And as I brought that to your attention last week, we talked about the fire, but I know he's not going to want to come up and say anything, but here with us tonight is Deputy Chief Mike Sullivan in the back. Maybe he does want to come up.
Well, we could give him a round.
He was the incident commander on that scene. And he and his crews did a great job.
And I would add, I think what makes it particularly remarkable is the fact that there was an accelerant, it was a vacant house, so the call didn't come in immediately, and I gather that it was really pretty much involved, fully involved, by the time we were able to get there, the call came in and we got there. And the department still protected the property at 81 Spooner next door, which actually was, as I understand it, downwind and very close to the building, and above the building, in terms of, above the building that was on fire, sitting on a hill. So it was very, very likely to become involved, and I don't know how you guys did it, but you protected it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I just want to say, and I think that that situation points out to new Lieutenant O'Leary, our thanks to you and to your family, because it is, we realize that a lot of the situations like that one present a lot of dangers for firefighters. And we do fully appreciate all the efforts and the sacrifices that go into this job, and we thank you.
Thank you. Could we maybe get up, get up real quick?
Absolutely, please.
His wife can pin his collar pins on, maybe get a picture if you'd like to get up?
Let's do that.
I know I need a picture.
Do you want to do it in front of the seal? If you're taking? I think. Get out of there. Thank you, Chance. Face this way, nice smile, everybody. I couldn't see that, the picture. There you go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Usually we do a picture with all.
Oh, sure. Sure. Or you have other family members?
Congratulations.
We can take a picture with the boring officials, and then you can get your family. One more, one more.
Congratulations.
Good. I have a mother-in-law. You want your mother-in-law?
All right. Nothing. Don't get her wrong. Oh, wow. Up right here, you see that little camera box?
See how it turned out?
Okay, now we're going to go back to the ordinary business, and we begin, whoops, with items miscellaneous, sorry, a public comment?
May I just add one?
Go ahead, speak.
I wanted to get that over with. The Selectmen received a letter this past week that Comcast or Xfinity is going to be encrypting basic service in Brookline. And I just wanted to alert people to that. I'm not sure what the implications are for customers in Brookline. I know that what it means is that it's going to require the purchase of additional equipment from Xfinity slash Comcast for some people who now have basic service through other arrangements, other equipment. And I just wanted to alert people that that is going to be happening. And we're going to have to figure out what the implications are, what steps the town should or can take with regard to that.
Comcast will have to notify its customers, presumably?
Yes, there was a notification, a draft notification letter that was included in the materials that we got in our information packet.
Okay, well, future discussion then, I would say, right?
I believe so, yeah.
A public comment, Ms. Baker? And I'm just going to remind you that you are, you have three minutes, good.
I'm aware. Thank you very much. First, I want to thank the dedicated, hard-working members of the B-Space Committee. Thank you for your hard work. I monitored very closely what was going on. Selectman Binka, onward to you, sir. And Nancy, thank you for your service on the Diversity Committee, the Special Selectmen's Committee on Diversity. I'm told by the dedicated Ms. Parks that my recommended guidelines for the proposal I made in June, how we might encourage our townspeople to participate in internet-based conversations about issues of import to the town, was submitted to you in your packet. It's not in mine, but I presume it's in yours, and that's something I look forward to talking about with you in the future, when you've had a chance to consider it. And I, too, am doing some research on academic perception of what the benefits are of having members of the community be able to participate in internet-based discussion to make sure it's a good idea. So I look forward to continuing that conversation. And I also wanted to ask my representatives, leaders in my town, to please consider asking both Mr. Klechner and the members of committees who are conducting searches for senior-level positions in the town of Brookline to do everything they're capable of doing now with regard to best practices, at seeking a diverse candidate pool and diverse sources of referral for candidates for important positions such as Water and Sewer Director and Town Council, and there may be other senior positions I'm not aware of. We are awaiting the finishing of Selectman Daley's committee's work, nonetheless, we have important positions to fill. So I wanted to introduce myself as a possible candidate for a member of one of the search committees. I did do executive search for 10 years. One of my clients asked me to do a special report on attracting African-Americans to a high-potential management training program that they had. And in the course of that research, I learned a lot of valuable things, and I make myself available to any member of the town employee workforce to be a participant or consultant or advisor, free of charge, because I'm really committed to seeing more diversity among our workforce in Brookline, and really, the leadership rests with the six of you. So please charge the people who report to you with doing that, and I'm happy to be part of accomplishing our shared goal of seeing a more diverse workforce here in town.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, and for sticking to the time, we appreciate that, especially when we're running late. Okay, now we have a series of items under our miscellaneous calendar. The first is the minutes of August 6th. Are there corrections, additions, and amendments to the minutes?
I do have one small edit, and I will pass it on.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
Then I move that we approve the minutes of August 6th as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waszinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we'll move on to the items, item A, B, C, D, E, F. Are there ones, I certainly want to hold some, but are there some that we can vote without holding, folks?
I think we could vote G and H.
Okay, yeah, well, those certainly, I would expect.
I'd actually like to hear about the others.
Hear about all of the others?
Briefly, yes.
Okay, then we'll move to the next item, which is the, and we'll welcome Planning Director Allison Steinfeld to tell us about the proceeds of the St. Aden's project. Somebody else? Ah, all right, it's, we're, all right, Mr. Viall is going to tell us about this, and Mr. Blood. And I gather we have someone here from the developer?
Yes.
Yeah? Does she want to come forward and be acknowledged, recognized? Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Roger Blood, Chair of the Brookline Housing Advisory Board. Last time I was up here, a few weeks ago, with Fran Price with our Swan Song, it was to ask you for the umpteenth time for authorizing the spending of money. And it's our pleasure tonight to do something perhaps unprecedented, and that is to ask your authorization to take some money back and put it in the housing trusts till, since we have actually a surplus remaining on one of the affordable housing projects. And much of what we're going to be talking about briefly here is the result of Fran's hard work in negotiating money that was left on the table, so to speak.
An unusual result, I do believe.
Yes, a happy result.
Happy result.
And as you'll, again, you'll hear briefly, much of it thanks to our former Congressman, Barney Frank, and getting some added funds for this project when they were much needed. And of course, it's about St. Aden's, and the immediate reason for our being here tonight is to ask that the Board of Selectmen authorize Allison Steinfeld, Steinfield, our new Director of Planning and Committee Development, to execute on behalf of the town an agreement regarding excess proceeds relating to the St. Aden's project approved as deformed by Town Council and any subsequent documentation required to close out this project. As you know, the St. Aden's project was a great success, it's really a feather in the town's cap in terms of producing 36 additional affordable housing units in a 59-unit development, and also worthy because of its achievement of some historical preservation objectives with regard to the church and open space objectives with regard to the famous Beechtree. The town's funding, which began originally at a $2.5 million commitment, ended up with $6.1 million from the town's own resources. And in the final phase of that funding, and the thing that brings us here tonight, there was a payback formula that was agreed upon in the event of a unlikely surplus that would provide refunds to basically three parties, the town, the developer, the Planning Office for Urban Affairs, and a smaller portion to the Commonwealth. Most people watching this project from afar would think that it had been done a couple of years ago, because that's when the sellout was completed and the basic construction suitable for the property to be occupied. But there were some leftover concerns, things that needed repair and remediation in the project, not so visible, but relating to water penetration issues in parts of the foundation, and particularly in the underground garage, which serves everybody in the project, both affordable and market-rate units. The estimated cost of that remediation, remaining cost, is now set or estimated at $366,000. And that is rather high, because the lower-cost methods from inside the foundation have been tried and not have been completely successful. So now, in order to get a good, permanent fix, the experts, the consultants, have determined that some ripping up of outside landscaping and walkways needs to be actually done to get at the problem from the outside and complete the ceiling. There's been quite a bit of dialogue going on with regard to the, not just the physical aspects, but the financial aspects of the remaining financing, the remaining costs, and the prospective refund over recent months. And one result of that has been an agreement to put $366,000, this estimated cost, into escrow for completion of these remaining repairs. The better news is that after escrowing that amount, there are still surplus funds that will be available, are available now, for dispersment to the three parties that have helped fund the project. Basically, the town's share, unless you ask questions about it, the town's share under this formula will be within a range, subject to the final negotiations, of $145,000 to $168,000 and change. And that final document is in a late or final draft form. The town will be controlling the dispersment of the funds from the $366,000, and we believe, I think everybody from the town side, that the way the refunds are set up, that all of the parties are properly incented to both get the job done well and hopefully permanently, and yet not spend too much, because if it's done for less than $366,000, the same formula will apply, and that both the town, the developer, and the state will get some added funds at the end of this, at the end of this process.
Thank you. Mr. Viall, do you have anything you want to add?
I think Roger ran through pretty much everything that, he covered all the bases, but I would say, in talking with Fran, it's taken us a long time to get to this point. We're at this point, due to Fran's hard work. And in the past, it's been, it's a past practice that we, the Board would authorize the Director or the Acting Director to execute these types of documents on behalf of the town. And I know you've received the memo dated August 8th, and for Patty's sake, I think the Board, the vote we're looking for is actually spelled out in the first paragraph.
I've got it in front of me. I see Ms. Alberghini from the Planning Office for Urban Affairs, and I wonder if you would like to say anything? I actually would like to observe that the partnership between the town and the Planning Office involved a 40B project, and part of the reason this room is filled tonight is that we have before us a different, and I will say unfriendly, 40B. And I'm very proud to say that there are also friendly ones, and this was an outstanding example. So I would like to acknowledge that, and I appreciate the fact that you're here.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. We're, I'm delighted to be here. I think that both, I concur entirely, this was a tremendous process and partnership between our team and the town all along, from the very beginning. The result is extraordinary. The development is gorgeous, it's a vibrant, new, affordable, in most cases, community that was built there, award-winning. We've already won several awards.
Even did some historic preservation on the side.
We did historic preservation on the side, we have three conservation easements we have given to the town, a pedestrian easement, that site is constantly a really kind of walkthrough for the local schoolchildren and the budding neighbors. So we're delighted with it, it has been a great success, we've won awards from the quality of construction to the socially responsible sort of community that's been built there. So we're grateful, and I have to say, particularly as you're faced with another effort going forward, the town was terrific, we are very grateful for the support we received all along, and we, you know, had to work through a lot of issues, as we all know, but it did work out in the end, and we are grateful for your support, so we're thankful for that. And we are very happy to be able to say that we've not only been able to provide some modest savings on the operating side, which I know the memo addresses, also highly unusual and affordable housing development, but we'll be able to share this minimum of $145,000 in development savings. And that's largely because we both sold our market units for more, and because, of course, of the hard work of Representative Barney Frank.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And he did an extraordinary job for us. The one thing I would just say is some of the work that we're continuing on now is really, it's interesting, it's a result of saving the church and providing underground parking, which were two important objectives for all of us. But we just are having a little bit of challenge where the old foundation meets the new, and when you create a brand-new condition underground, it's hard to predict what's, how it's going to be hit.
And can I tell you that you are in a building that has experienced some similar kinds of, let's say, need for attention and additional work to make sure that we stop leaking in places we don't want to? So we're familiar, actually, with what happens. And part of the reason this room is filled tonight is that we have before us a different, and I will say unfriendly, 40B. And I'm very proud to say that there are also friendly ones, and this was an outstanding example. So I would like to acknowledge that, and I appreciate the fact that you're here.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the Board. We're, I'm delighted to be here. I think that both, I concur entirely, this was a tremendous process and partnership between our team and the town all along, from the very beginning. The result is extraordinary. The development is gorgeous. It's a vibrant, new, affordable, in most cases, community that was built there, award-winning. We've already won several awards.
Even did some historic preservation on the side.
We did historic preservation on the side. We have three conservation easements we have given to the town, a pedestrian easement. That site is constantly a really kind of walkthrough for the local schoolchildren and the budding neighbors. So it really, we're delighted with it. It has been a great success. We've won awards from the quality of construction to the socially responsible sort of community that's been built there. So we're grateful. And I have to say, particularly as you're faced with another effort going forward, the town was terrific. We are very grateful for the support we received all along, and we, you know, had to work through a lot of issues, as we all know. But it did work out in the end, and we are grateful for your support. So we're thankful for that. And we are very happy to be able to say that we've not only been able to provide some modest savings on the operating side, which I know the memo addresses, also highly unusual and affordable housing development, but we'll be able to share this minimum of $145,000 in development savings. And that's largely because we both sold our market units for more and because, of course, of the hard work of Representative Barney Frank when he was here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And he did an extraordinary job for us. The one thing I would just say is some of the work that we're continuing on now is really, it's interesting, it's a result of saving the church and providing underground parking, which were two important objectives for all of us. But we just are having a little bit of a challenge where the old foundation meets the new, and when you create a brand-new condition underground, it's hard to predict what's, how it's going to be hit.
And can I tell you that you are, you are in a building that has experienced some similar kinds of, let's say, need for attention and additional work to make sure that we stop leaking in places we don't want to? So we're familiar, actually, with what happens.
I love that's unpredictable, but, so, we're happy to be able to be here and to share these savings with you, and thank you for your support.
Well, thank you all. Any comments?
I just want to make a brief comment, because in my early days on the Board, we were constantly having to vote more money for this project. So it's delightful to get some money back that will go back into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I assume? And I want to thank-
We'll make sure of that.
Yes. I want to thank you, Roger, and Joe, and everybody from the, our Planning Department, Lisa, thank you for the, from the Planning Office for Urban Affairs. And yeah, Barney Frank was a tremendous supporter of affordable housing, and I did tell Joe Kennedy when he got elected that that had to be-
It's got to inherit that.
-one of the things he needed to pick up.
I might add, one of the best Barney Frank quips, and of course, he had many over his lifetime, somewhere during his assisting this, was if this is an example of a faith-based initiative, I'm all for faith-based initiatives.
Trust Barney to get it. Absolutely.
As, as the town and all the towns staff think.
May I make a comment?
Sure, by all means.
We, we are facing an unfriendly 40B, as Chairman DeWitt indicated, and it might be that the Planning Department will contact you about sharing your experiences with the town as part of that, if they haven't done that already. And that, I think, would be helpful. Thank you.
All right. But don't go, because we should take a vote. I move that we authorize Planning and Community Development Director Allison Steinfeld to execute on behalf of the town an agreement regarding excess proceeds related to the St. Aden's project, has been approved as deformed by Town Council, and any subsequent documentation required to close out this project. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Binka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you all, and I hope you plug your leaks, our leaks. I think we shared, this, these are, we are, these are definitely shared.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Next item has to do with Lawrence School. Mr. Giggly in the room? Are anybody speaking for this project? Well, in that case, it's a pretty routine situation where there is already a proposal for modular classrooms, and this is a traffic study. Does anybody have any questions about it?
Well, I, I do, I guess I'm, how do these extra modular units create more traffic? Is what I'm wondering.
I'm pretty sure the issue has to do with-
It's just additional students, so.
Yeah, it's additional students and additional teachers, and I think we do this all the time.
Can I add, coming off of the B-space discussion even as recently as last night, traffic at the Lawrence School is a very important consideration going forward. There's the potential that further Lawrence School expansion will be considered as part of the solution, and traffic has been highlighted as one of the main reasons why that needs to be thought of. So I think that it's a very opportune moment to proceed with this contract.
Just, I don't, I don't have any question about the need for a traffic study with regard to the modulators, but how do these modulators relate to possible further expansion? Do they?
They are in process and going to be constructed, as I understand.
Right.
But would they preclude?
Not necessarily, but I think we got pretty clear indication that for there to be, there are two aspects of this. One is that the modulators are needed pronto, and the other aspect is that if there is to be other kinds of expansion there, it can be done, but not as expeditiously. And all of those planning projects take quite a lot of time. The Devotion Project is now in its fifth year of planning.
No, I-
And so the issue here is meeting the classroom space needs.
No, I, I understand that.
And it's been approved by town meeting, and it's going forward.
No, I, I understand. But Selectmen Goldstein mentioned further expansion, and I was just wondering.
It's a longer range.
It's, it's a possibility at this point.
And continues to be a possibility.
It continues to be a possibility, but I, I mean, if you want to know the truth, the fact that those modulators need to be there will certainly impact the way any future expansion of Lawrence School might be enacted.
Right.
But it's something that I think can be lived with.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Mr. Gladstone, you have risen.
I think I can answer the question about the traffic study. Scott Gladstone, Russell Road, Town Meeting, precinct 16. Because I represented the interest of some of the newer road neighbors when there were discussions with the school committee, committee, subcommittee test with looking at sighting of the modulators. And traffic is impacted in two ways. So one, the modules are going to be built over what is now a parking lot, so, which has teachers parking in it. So there's going to be some impact with regard to more on-street parking permits for staff parking, which is going to impact the wider neighborhood. The other thing is with respect to where that building's going and the, some reconfiguring of the driveway that goes to the trash bin and, and some other utility areas, there was some concern about fire trucks and trash trucks being able to access that part of the facility. So the way it's designed is to, these, those larger trucks need to pull forward and then back into the driveway.
I think you're going into more detail than we need.
So there, so there, that's the reason, there is a traffic impact in.
I think my, my questions have been answered.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Gladstone. All right. Can we move this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. I move that we approve a contract amendment in the amount of $99,900 for a traffic study to be conducted by Flansburgh Associates in connection with the Lawrence School Modular Classroom project. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Binka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is fire station improvements.
You know, I really think that if, I believe there must be a Building Commission meeting going on, so.
Yeah, right, we don't seem to have anybody here.
I just want to just defer the, these building projects until we can consult with somebody.
Okay, then, I believe the chief is with us. Let's skip to item F. Chief, would you like to tell us about grants? Thank you.
Good evening. Sure, I'm here tonight to ask the Board to accept two grants for our Public Safety Dispatch Center. This grant is, is a yearly grant that is given by the State 911 Department, and this year, we were able to apply for a certain amount based on the calls that go into our E-911 Center and the amount of population that we have in town. So this year, we applied for grants for, to offset personnel costs and to buy some minor pieces of equipment, little pieces of equipment for the dispatch center. And, but the majority of that will be spent, will be used to offset our personnel costs and overtime costs of the 16 dispatches that we have that work there each day. That amount of the grant is $135,634 in total, dollars in total. 135, 634 dollars. The second one is a training grant. This past year, the State came up with required training, 16 hours for all of the dispatches. That really did not impact us, as we had, since we, since the inception of the Dispatch Center, they've all been receiving ongoing training. They're all emergency medical dispatches. But because it's a state requirement, they have allowed us to apply for $29,970 to train our dispatches, which we will do. And this year, it will also include the time spent by newer dispatches that go to the academy. So it's those two grants that I would like the Board to accept on our behalf.
Okay. Questions for the chief? Selectmen Daley.
Just a brief comment. So the two, two grants total $165,600. And I want to say again, I'm always very grateful to your department for doing such a good job at seeking out the, any grants that might possibly apply, because this is a significant amount of money to put toward our 911 service. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief? Seeing none. I move that we accept two grants from the Massachusetts State 911 Department. One for $135,634 to be used for the purchase of equipment, and one for $29,970 to be used for required training. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Yeah, the first one is equipment and personnel costs, I think. I know our-
I don't think we have to specify, but if you want to, I'll say for equipment and personnel costs.
I just don't want-
Do not spend it all on equipment.
No, very little is being spent on equipment.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Binka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. And we have now two temporary alcoholic beverage permits. Can we move them both in the language that's in the agenda, in the calendar? Items G and H, we grant a temporary permit for Lars Anderson Auto Museum on August 15th, and a second temporary permit to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for an event on September 7th. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Binka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Chief, would you like to come back? Wherever you go, wherever you got?
I'd go to the Board.
Okay. And now, something to spend your grant money on: personnel.
Yes, we have a vacancy in our Traffic and Records Department, and we have been holding onto the vacancy for a couple of months. This concludes the study that we did of all of our civilian staff that was conducted over the winter, and I'm looking at this point to fill the vacancy. The vacancy was created by a retirement, and we have three, we have a total of four people working in that division there. Three positions are currently filled, this one is vacant, and it really would behoove us to fill, go ahead and fill it as quickly as we can.
Okay. Questions for the chief? I certainly agree, it's a critical position. Then I move that we authorize the filling of a vacancy in the position of Senior Account Audit Clerk C5 in the Traffic and Records Division, which, by the way, I believe is where parking tickets get processed. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Very important.
And paid.
And paid, right. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Binka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item is a grant of locations for National Grid. I believe I see Mr. Kevin Johnson and looks like National Grid representative, please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening. We're here tonight for a grant location on Clarence Street. It requires action from the Board. DPW has approved the plan for our specs. It's a standard procedure when they need to upgrade a service main for a building in that area. So if there's, anybody has any questions regarding the constructions, Victor is here to answer them?
Okay. Questions from members of the Board? We usually like to know how much distance you'll be covering with this project.
We can read down into the record. Good evening. Verta Phoenix, National Grid.
Welcome.
We would like to install and maintain approximately 260 feet, more or less, of six-inch gas main in Clarence Street from the existing six-inch gas main in Naples Street easterly to the existing six-inch gas main in Fuller Street.
And we assume the abutters are being noticed of this work?
Yeah. All the abutters were notified with a seven-day grid period.
Okay, all right.
For this hearing.
Questions?
Is this being done at the request of the property owner, or is this at the request of NS, NS?
It's National Grid, I think.
Sorry, National Grid, excuse me.
That is correct. Actually, we're doing this per request in support of the customer, by a company of Rottenberg, Rottenberg Management. I believe they own and operate a building complex with 22 units. I took, I did a pre-site, a pre-work site visit on my way here, and there's two different complexes at the corner of Fuller, this one, this one at the intersection of Naples. I don't know which one of those two is, but definitely one of those two is requesting service to provide a gas heat and cooking as well.
Okay.
How recently was Clarence Street last repaved, is the question? Don't know for sure.
I know. I could mean-
It's not a situation, I know we've got sort of a moratorium on digging up streets when it's been repaved too recently.
Yes, it's definitely beyond the moratorium, from my knowledge, but I don't have the exact date.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Selectmen Binka.
How long a process will this be? What should the abutters expect?
So normally, it takes, we can do about 50 to 65 feet of trenching every day, depending on what we find. If we run into additional utilities or ledge, that may come into play. Usually, the process works that we'll do the entire trench, lay down the new pipe, and then we come back and rega, and gas up the new infrastructure. So about 10 days, I would say, give or take.
All right. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this grant to the National, to National Grid for work on Clarence Street from Fuller Street to Naples Road? You coming forward as a piece of public person? No, I think you're sitting down. All right.
I'm going to ask one more question.
Selectmen Binka.
You, you cover over so that people can get into and out of their driveways at the end of the day.
Yes, correct. We make use of our steel plates to ensure that if an abutment needs to come out, we can quickly cover that up to allow for the egress of the property. We will also have our police detail on site helping with the traffic flow.
Okay.
Good.
We ready to take a vote? I move that we grant permission to National Grid to construct, to construct, and to, and we grant a location for a gas main under the, under Clarence Street from Fuller Street to Naples Road, a distance of 260 feet. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen Binka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Wyszynski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would just notice, note, Kevin, that we have had some issues where people have not gotten notice ahead of time, and they've come home, and they haven't been able to get in. So please make sure, please make sure that we get the word out to people when this is going to be starting.
Yes, now, now they'll file for a permit.
Yeah.
For, to excavate in the road, and I'll make sure the permit inspector is well aware to make sure the residents are notified.
Great, thank you.
And just as a point of information, my department also sends out an abutment notification with the approximate dates for the duration of the project. It has my contact information, and in the event they have any questions, concerns, that can be quickly addressed and ratified. I would also like to leave my contact information. I'm the new company liaison for this area. It's my first day on the job, so.
Ah, well, welcome.
Good, good.
I want to make sure we continue to foster a productive and efficient relationship here, so.
Good, I hope everything goes as smoothly as this meeting.
Right, right. And, and I will say, you're, we have mixed feelings about this. We very much appreciate having the supply lines upgraded, and we all feel much better and safer, but it sure disrupts things for a while. So we look for a good result after a little bit of pain. Thank you.
And we can be sensitive to that as well.
Right. Thank you very much.
So, so far, you're doing a good job.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item before us is a discussion of the proposal for development at Hancock Village. And I think, right, I'm going to ask the town administrator to sort of give us a little synopsis of where we are and what we're doing. And I gather we're going to get, actually, a little bit of a slide presentation, and so, Mr. Kletner, you have the microphone until the apparatus is set up.
Thank you. Yes, we are expecting a more formal presentation from our new neighborhood conservation district at Hancock Village. So as context, this is a process for the Board of Selectmen in the town to provide comments to an initial preliminary, what is referred to as a site eligibility application that the developer will make towards, to a state financing agency. In this case, they are requesting site approval by Mass Development. You may, this may sound familiar, because in fact, we did go through this process earlier in the, earlier in the year, which was ultimately withdrawn, but a new development proposal has been submitted, and so we're starting over. But to a great extent, we believe the proposal is very similar in nature. But to a great extent, we, we believe the proposal is very similar in nature. So you'll be hearing a lot of the same issues and concerns, although we do want to update our, our comments to Mass Development. And our deadline is August thirtieth. So this is the, the date in which the board should hear all of the testimony and issues. I would like to mention that there are participants this evening at the staff level. Our Allison Steinfeld, our new planning director, and I wanna welcome Allison again. She is actually on vacation for a longstanding day off for a personal matter and is back for this evening because of the nature of this, this particular issue. So thank you, Allison. And of course, her, her staff, including Cara Bruton, who was very involved in the last process. We also have our town council, Jocelyn Murphy. Jocelyn may actually be down at the advisory committee for a bit, but she'll be coming up shortly. And also, we have our special counsel, Catherine Murphy, and Sam Nagler from Croquetis and Bluestein, who are here. So the first thing we thought would be appropriate is to have our Neighborhood Conservation District, who has had a public hearing, I believe, in several sessions to, to prepare some comments for the board's consideration. And so we'd like to start with that. And I believe Dick Garver is going to be handling that on behalf of the district commission. Please.
Nope. Actually, probably we wish you would do it. Welcome, Mr. Garver.
Good evening. I'm vice chair of the commission, so I'm here to represent them tonight. I know I've seen at least two members here. Robin Kuchar, who is on Beverly Road, right? And Stephen Chiameti at Russett Road. I'm not sure whether any other members are here tonight. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the planning staff that worked with us in preparing the report for you all. Cara Bruton and Maria Morelli. They did some outstanding work for us and made life as smooth as it could be in this enterprise. I guess the purpose in coming before you tonight is to share with you how the commission arrived at its conclusions in the report that we recently furnished to you all. And I wanna do that first by characterizing Hancock Village as it exists today. It's a rather remarkable place, as I'm sure you know. It's the realization of a goal of American residential planning, the garden village, at a very high level. I, by the way, happen to have grown up in a garden village outside Cincinnati, Ohio. But it did not have the integration of the features of landscape, residence, and circulation in a way that accentuates the natural state of the site. It didn't come close to this. This, this is a remarkable place. It is attractive. It's socially and economically successful. It's historic. It's been declared eligible for national register. And of course, it was the, the features of it that were divi, designed in it by the Olmstead, the Brookline Firm of Olmstead Associates. The features of it that make it so remarkable is what lies behind the guidelines that were incorporated into the neighborhood conservation district designation. So the second thing I would do then is contrast the characteristics of the present proposal with the character of Hancock Village as it exists today, basically intact after almost seventy years. First dimension, as I say, it integrates housing, open space, and circulation. Talk about the housing first. The characteristic building form, the building form, is two-story townhouses, up-and-down townhouses. They were enabled to be built here by zoning relief granted by the town so that Hancock Insurance Company could build homes at an affordable price at a greater number of units than the existing single-family zoning could have accommodated for returning vets from the Second World War. So it was developed between, I believe, forty-six and forty-nine for returning vets. There are a total of seven hundred and eighty-nine townhouses. Within Brookline itself, there are five hundred and thirty. The characteristic arrangement of the townhouses is in this U form that you can see in this picture. And it's, it's these characteristics that are highlighted in the NCD guidelines with respect to architecture, the massing, scale, facade treatment in the guidelines. So Olmstead Associates, whoops. Olmstead Associates took this building form. Let's see if this pointer, yeah. You can see these U's here. And Olmstead Associates utilized them to establish, to form a hierarchy of open spaces on the site. There are, first of all, some that we're calling semi-public. That is, they are where the pub, public would enter and exit the front doors of the houses to the street and to the parking. So these, these slides show you how. They're grouped around green courtyards with shared sidewalks that separate people in their houses from the street itself and bring them down to access to the roadway. The, the second tier in the hierarchy is that the rears of the units have openings. Each unit, each townhouse has an opening that opens into here called semi-private open space. That, that is, they, it's open space, planted, green, that serves all of the units collectively. And each unit, each townhouse has a patio that opens onto this green space. And I can't help remarking, I was out there just strolling around a couple of weekends ago, and I was struck by the number of rental tenants that were cultivating the landscapes around their townhouses. These are examples. But this, this, I think, is a token of the success of the integration of these units within a landscape that gives people pride and pleasure in the character of their units. So they're spending time investing in their own fronts and backyards. There, one of the features of the site is a rolling terrain with pudding stone outcroppings, which have the Olmstead firm successfully incorporated within the overall design so that at some points, the, the semi-public, the shared green space actu, actually morphs into these outcroppings, which become rustic elements within the landscape as a whole. That's just an image of one of those. And finally, a feature that evolved through the planning process and came out in the final configuration is this park, which is at the northern edge of Hancock Village. It's a much more urbane space. It's green. It is lined with mature trees. It rolls and undulates like the former golf course that it apparently was. And it serves a social function, as you can see. I think that's a very recent picture of people watching a movie within this park. And it also serves as kind of a buffer between Hancock Village, which you can see, of course, here, and the Russett Road and Beverly Road houses to the back. It's, it's a cushion, let's say. The word buffer doesn't appeal to me because it sounds like there's an impact that needs to be protected from. That's not the case here. But it's, it's a distinctive feature of the site and a kind of a transition between two different kinds of places.
Can I just make a comment? Because that last picture kind of illustrated it. When you look at the plan with all of those rows sort of in neat lines, you do not understand the level of care and sophistication that the Olmstead planners used because it is, as you suggested, a quite varied landscape. And just to see the plan with the, the lines of row houses, you do not understand what the physical landscape is actually like. And that sort of corridor there where you can see it sort of rolling down the hill or where the outcrops are, are very carefully, I guess what I'm trying to say is the, the way the, the housing units are laid out are very thoughtfully arranged so that those become very important features.
Yeah. No, I absolutely concur. I, that, the, the diagram that you can see up here makes them perhaps look a little regimented. But in fact, they are situated in different levels of the terrain. You might recall from the first picture that showed them set within the, the semi-public green space. They're at different levels. And so you always feel that you are in, you are lucky enough to be a resident within a natural setting rather than a resident of a, what you in fact are, a highly planned
Dense.
developed facility. So absolutely. So the present forty-B proposal. Hundred and ninety-two units. Just keep up with my notes here. They would take place, well, you can see them outlined here. This is the green belt. We'll talk about it more. Or I prefer to call it the, the park. This is the pudding stone rock outcropping. It comprises nine point three acres on which would be situated a hundred and ninety-two units. Since the 2012 proposal, the developer has made some modifications to the design. The previous design was five, this is the, a four-story apartment building that is situated here. It had been five stories. It is now four stories. A form of articulation has been added to the roof line, which was horizontal before. I'm sure the architect thought he was perhaps adding an element of the peaked roofs of the townhouses. But of course, the scale is entirely different from the townhouses. So situated as it is in that rock outcropping, it levels the rock outcropping. Nonetheless, it's about the highest point within Hancock Village, even after the leveling. So you now have a four-story apartment building located at the high point within the village. And has some very unfortunate relationships, would have some very unfortunate relationships to the surrounding buildings. In the submission the developer made, he characterized the elevation of the four-story apartment building. His illustration only went to here. But Cara, bless her heart, has shown us how it would be and feel if you were in these townhouses here. You can see, by the way, if you can just make out, that's the, the topography today. And you can see that it's been chewed away. And the apartment building's been put there. And what had been open space here becomes a turnaround, which you can see here. This is it looking in the other direction. And then Cara developed this section cut through here to the south. So again, you can see the relationship of the apartment building to the existing townhouses. And I, I think you will agree, it would fundamentally change the character of living in those townhouses. The two, two, two and a half story apartment buildings have been located in the green belt. That's a reduction of a half story, I believe it is. I guess it's a reduction of a full story from the previous proposal. The number of units has been reduced to one, from one twenty-six to seventy-six. Garages have been introduced between the townhouses here. It's another feature of the new proposal. Impacts, well, it would eliminate the park. It's, let's see. That's, that's a rendering of the two and a half story proposed townhouses. This is the garages that would be introduced between the townhouses. And the impact would be a development of, utterly unlike the character of the rest of Hancock Village. This is a piece of existing Hancock Village of a comparable square footage, just to highlight what's different about it. Here, again, you can see these are the semi-public spaces, the houses that are grouped around a shared court. And this is just a piece of the larger semi-public, highly usable, open space behind. With the park wiped out, you have two apartment buildings that back onto landscaping, but not usable, I would say, for any particular features, and onto driveway and the garages. The, the open spaces that are left, and I believe out of the nine acres, the, the developer is suggesting that he's leaving, I think it was four and a half. But this slide shows the character of these spaces. Rather than the large, broad lawns and woods and terrain that you saw in Hancock Village as it exists today, you have the flattened landscape. You have the introduction of buildings, which the grading has to, is, has flattened the terrain in order to support the buildings and their shared parking spaces. You have buildings that enter on the street directly, but back onto not open space, but the features that you can see there. So one other point here. Here you can see the, a difference between the 2012, 2013 proposals. You can see the introduction of the garages that weren't there before. But interestingly, in this slide, you can see in the blue the paved surfaces that have been introduced in the design closer, moving all of that closer to the existing residence that then was the case in the 2012 submission. So in, our conclusion based on all of this is, first of all, that Hancock Village is an extraordinary place with a integrated and intact character that makes it worthy of historic consideration. historic consideration, that the present proposal does violence to the basic characteristics of that design by eliminating open space, topography, and introducing structures which are out of character with the rest of the development. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
So, questions for Mr. Garver and any other members of the team, Ms. Bruton? Anybody?
I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't I don't know if this was within the purview of what your committee studied, but we heard a lot of comments from people who lived in those houses on Russett and Beverly the last time around about already having many problems with water runoff. And is that something that that you looked at in in terms of all of this impervious surface being over there under this plan? What is the impact going to be on or likely impact going to be on those neighboring houses in terms of of water?
Well, we we didn't develop, we're not in a position to develop any technical information on that. We could highlight the characteristics of the new plan that would increase the potential for impacts, drainage and so on. This, it may not be entirely legible from here, but these here highlight instances in which, in order to level the site, it was necessary to introduce a sudden more than two to one terrain change to the houses abutting it. And then, of course, this slide shows the movement of impervious surfaces towards the existing Beverly and Russett Road houses. Perhaps it's a technical question whether those, the potential impacts of that on drainage can be mitigated or not. Again, we were not in a position to judge that, but we did want to highlight it as an issue.
I just want to comment, Mr. Kleckner, as we're putting our material together, that I think when there are already a great many existing drainage problems, as we have heard from neighbors, that this certainly looks to me like it will make those problems much worse.
I would just like to add that as part of our process, we did convene all the departments who the municipal departments who had responsibilities for water runoff, for example, and transportation and and other infrastructure issues, and they've all convened and are going to be participating in the comments that the town provides. And I'll make sure, I'm sure that that was addressed, but I'll make doubly sure that it gets looked at.
Can I, I just want to quickly follow up and then I'll turn it over to another member of the board, but I do have the impression that you've you've suggested this, but I just want to confirm, the proposal before us envisions a fair amount of regrading and in effect, re-flattening the existing contours of the landscape.
That that's absolutely right, in two, two distinct kinds of ways. First, the apartment building, you saw the removal of the pudding stone outcropping on the lower of that feature. And secondly, in the slide that showed the the green belt in its park characteristics, you got a little sense of how it undulates as a marvelous character to it. And the installation of the townhouses and the parking require that all to be leveled.
Right, that's kind of what I thought. Selectman Goldstein.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Garver, and to the Conservation Commission and to town staff for a very coherent and thorough report. You made reference to something which led me to believe that you might have discovered something about how the green belt came into being. I think you said that it was the result of a compromise. It's not something that I'd heard before, do you have some information?
Well, I'm not sure, I know the story and and maybe somebody here, Cara, perhaps knows it a little more closely than I, but I gather that the plan, while having its basic character, evolved in that direction, that in in some first thoughts about it, that green belt was developed, but as the developer worked with the town and and the context he was working with, the design evolved to and to create that part.
Nothing specific has been uncovered about the communications between the town and the developer at the time.
Well, I personally don't have any, if somebody, Stephen, if you have one to add?
I'm Steve Cumanti, precinct sixteen, I'm on the commission, the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission. Basically, looking at the records of the minutes and the meetings that have been faxed and posted on the website, it's clear there were agreements, there were conditions set by the selectmen at the time Hancock was permitted to take liberties with the zoning rules and it's not part of the national, the the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission's purview, but in as far as what's been presented before in other contexts, it's a view that it's the view that these constitute agreements, not, well, in a contractual nature, between the town, which were conditioned for granting the exemptions from the zoning. That's not an uncommon thing, towns grant, public bodies grant zoning exemptions subject to various conditions established by the public body, and the record of the minutes and meetings that are posted on the website of the town show that. And at the time, at the right time and in the right venue, you know, that 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 will be pursued.
Thank you. And by the way, I I very much appreciate your comment about the the term buffer and the term green belt, and I I think it is a very important semantic difference, and I'd like to make sure that in our next report that we adopt that that vernacular, I like that very much.
Okay, Selectman Binka?
Yeah, well, with respect to this specific point, I would also note that there were, that there are documents that indicate that the green belt was an amenity not only for protection of neighboring homes, but also for the residents of Hancock Village.
That's right.
And really part of this integral plan, and indeed, the last slide showed some of those
Exactly.
Very vibrant uses of that, as as well as, you know, people who have driven past there know that it it can be used either for for a very active use, like the two bottom photos, or for uses like the one on the top photo, or for one or two individuals or three individuals
Right.
Just using it as a park.
We couldn't resist the irony of including this at the end of the show here because this is from the Hancock Village website.
And and I I would also just note, Nancy, that a lot of the issues that, such as the issue of drainage, is an issue that the Neighborhood Conservation District isn't really focused on, it's not within their particular purview, or it might not be within their particular purview, but the selectmen will be, as we did the last time, I think, putting together a comment letter that includes comments such as that, and I gather we're going to hear something about that tonight also.
Yes, Selectman Wyszynski.
If you can go back to the slide that shows the differences in the impervious surfaces, I'm I'm struck by
Oops.
The other one, yeah, that one. I'm struck by how the impervious surfaces seems to have shifted back towards Russett Road. What what, can you summarize some of the other differences between this proposal and the one of a couple of years ago?
Well, the, this is, this is certainly within the set of adverse differences. There are other differences which might be considered as accommodation by the developer to what they heard last time around. I've mentioned that the two apartment-style buildings are reduced by a story each. The number of total units has been decreased. But at the same time, the fundamentals, the underlying characteristics remain the same. The apartment building is still there, it still sits on a rot rock outcropping now leveled somewhat, but it still looms, as you saw. The the two and a half, now two and a half story buildings obliterate the park and fundamentally change the character of the existing townhouses that would abut it. If if you can picture it, this this wa, this is today the shared open space for these units. So they their patios today sit at the edge of the park. Look what they will sit at the edge of going forward. So there have, there have been some changes, and I also mentioned, to be scrupulously fair, I mentioned the the change in the articulation of the apartment roof, for what that's worth, it's it's a gesture, I think. But but the fundamentals remain the same and in other respects have, this is a deterioration, the introduction of the parking garages. There is now more, I believe this is the correct statement, there is now more parking at surface and less below grade than there was in the previous proposal. And all of that is contrary to the the spirit, the characteristics of the village, which give it its distinction and its historic character.
So.
Could I add just one thing while we have this this thing up? The Neighborhood Conservation District Commission was focused pretty much on the items that were viewed to be relevant to our task. Traffic, for example, wasn't specifically ours, but I I understand you don't have yet the reports from other other branches, and we were really hoping and expecting that traffic was going to have an opportunity to comment because, as you see this this diagram, Thornton Road does not exit to the streets. Asheville is where all this traffic is going onto Russett Road and so on in that area. When you consider how many, probably hundreds of cars with hundreds of parking lots that he's going to add, all of that goes basically through Asheville Road, it's a traffic problem even now, basically, and we're looking forward to the traffic department or whatever, basically, whoever is responsible for the traffic flow to to specifically comment on that, because it really wasn't for us particularly, but it's literally an absurd situation the way they're proposing that everything works.
And and therefore, we did highlight it, as well as the potential safety issues of this one-way circulation.
Selectman Daly?
Yeah, I I think I'm I'm struck when I look at the pictures on both the old, the old and the new proposal, is how much of this got put in, call it, whether you want to call it the buffer zone or the
The green belt.
The green belt or whatever, right next to the single-family homes
Yes.
in in the neighborhood. And you spoke of a compromise, creating a sort of space before this greater density, and this sort of completely violates
That's right.
that, and I'm I'm sort of astonished that the new proposal follows that same model that that seems very similar to the old proposal in terms of how much of that green belt buffer zone disappears.
Perhaps with a few steroids added.
Other questions for Mr. Garver? Perhaps, Ms. Bruton, would you mind just coming forward to give us a a sense of overall picture, like where we are with traffic impact questions? I know Selectman Daly raised the question about water and impervious surfaces, I'm looking at the lower slide there with all that paved space. I'm wondering if those parking spaces are providing more parking that is actually needed by the units that would be constructed? Is it meant to give parking, for example, to existing housing units at the price of loss of all that green space? And anything else you'd like to add?
So talking about drainage, your first questions were about drainage.
Well, I'm saying some of the technical questions that Mr. Garver
And traffic.
wasn't, and and that the NCD Commission really didn't address.
Right, so as you know, Kathy Murphy is leading the charge for us to pull together a comment letter, and as Mel
And I see her, we'll we'll hear from her in a minute.
And as Mel mentioned, we did have all the department heads, you know, met together. Tom Brady's again looking at drainage and Transportation Division's again looking at traffic impacts. You may recall that the last response to the proposal last year, we did ask questions about safe stopping site distance on the existing Nashville driveway and how that might be impacted by the addition of more units and driveways on a road that both turns horizontal
Right, right.
vertically. So those questions are still, we would ask those same questions and we'll be putting that into the comment letter, but I don't have specifics for you tonight.
Sure, I I'm just trying to sort of help the board and and public also understand what the whole scope of
Right.
our comments would be, because I also recall in the submission, there are statements having to addressing the town's commitment to creating affordable housing. Are we going to respond to that?
Yes, we will, and let me just show you this one slide about drainage.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Which might, I think some of the neighbors might want to speak to this slide as well later on, but it's faint. So this section here, on the bottom half of this page, is taken here between Beverly and the site and the and the existing townhomes, including a proposed building. And it's very faint, but you'll see a light gray line down here. That's the existing topography along
Oh.
the section. And so what, in this area, what the proposal is doing is adding soil in a, would then have to tie back into existing grades on both sides. So on the side, you see a wall that's about four feet, four or five feet tall.
Looks like a retaining wall to me.
Retaining wall with, you know, some landscaping going down to, these are the existing homes off of Beverly. And then also on the other side, topography going down to meet the existing Hancock Village Town Homes that are on the on the south here. I don't know why that grade is being brought up like that when there's no reason to tie in to the grading. It may have to do with drainage, but that would be speculation at this point. We really don't have enough information to make very detailed recommendations, no matter how talented Tom Brady is.
Right.
So that might be something that would be better addressed if Mass Development thought that this project should move forward, but at this point, what we're focused on is whether the site's even of the right site for development at all.
Correct.
But but this, I would think, would be part of that comment, that clearly raising the the elevation of the ground above the neighboring properties, that that will almost inevitably exacerbate drainage problems for those neighboring properties, and I assume that's going to be mentioned.
Yeah, and we will be making comments, but just, we can't make an overall statement about
Sure.
whether or not drainage can be handled. Another comment that they did make in their proposal was that they would be using some pervious pavement, so that could theoretically reduce the runoff that you would otherwise see in a typical development. On the other hand, as you know, Horse Sanctuary is right next door. Sorry, just a second. So this is, here's the Baker School over here, here's Independence Drive, and a lot of this drainage right now existing, you know, it it pools up in here where the U-Haul truck was stuck for a while, but eventually the water drains out and then down into the Horse Sanctuary, which is a protected resource, and so in addition to stormwater runoff, the quantity of water, we're also concerned about the quality of that water that's that's going to those systems. So if you have pervious surfaces for pavement, yes, that might help infiltrate the water, but is the quality of the water going to be good enough to be able to go directly into the sanctuary? So those are all smaller but very important comments that we'll be looking at.
Thank you.
Perhaps Ms. Murphy, you'd like to just give us a general sense? Perhaps Ms. Murphy, you'd like to just give us a general sense of how you intend to direct your comments or our comments through you?
Happy to do that. I'm Kathy Murphy, and I'm a lawyer with the firm Krikides and Bluestein. As you will recall, we did a, the town submitted quite a complete response to the last go-around. As Mr. Garver has indicated, this proposal is not that much different in terms of its impact, its location on the site, its, its size, even though it's 79 units, fewer units, it's, it's still of a size and nature and location that its impacts are very similar. We anticipate that we will take our former submission and we will bring it up, totally up to date. And as you will recall, that submission had quite a bit of history about Brookline's affordable housing efforts and the money that's been spent on affordable housing by the town in recent years. We are going to be bringing that up, up to current date and also responding directly to some of the points raised in this current submission. And I'm working with Cara and, and Allison and their team on that. Then we also had a whole section on whether or not the site was appropriate, another section on whether or not the development was appropriate to the site. And included in those discussions were raising the issues of traffic, safety, drainage, and some of the other comments that were raised. We won't have answers to all of those, but we will have, we will be raising all of those as, as issues again in this particular response. There are some other, somewhat more minor comments that we will have on the, on the completeness and adequacy of their submission, that they've done a much better job, if you will, on this submission than they did the last time, but there still are some points where, where we think they haven't given all the information that they should have. And then I think what we're going to do, at least my current thought, is that we will rewrite the introduction and really aggressively try to refute some of their points that I think are just not, not appropriate. I mean, one of them, for example, is they say several times that this is an example of smart growth through creative infill, which personally I think is just not the case. So there are some other statements related to that, that we will, I think in our introduction, try to point out as, as not being the case. And then we will, as I say, do a complete response, similar but obviously updated as to the one we did last time.
Okay, questions for Ms. Murphy while we have her before, Selectman Gulstein?
Kathy, do you think there's any point to be made that it's something of a tactic by the developer to withdraw their application six months ago, make almost nothing in the way of changes when it comes to the most sensitive issue of, of the entire proposal, which is the, the, the green belt that we've been talking about? And, and come back six months later with, with, with a, a plan that, that, as I said, does almost nothing or even, even worsens that condition and in the process costs the town more in legal fees and, and resources spent? I mean, is that, is that a point that we can pursue? It, it's a little frustrating to me, frankly.
Well, we certainly can make the point that, you know, that they really haven't responded to any of the town's concerns. I mean, their, you know, their, their re-submission is clearly changed very little from their first submission. I think we can certainly make that point. Why, you know, whether we want to take that further or not, we'll, we can see how it sort of plays out.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Murphy? Then I think we will give an opportunity for, to hear from members of the community. Are there folks who have comments or questions that you would like to make or raise? Ms. Farley?
Regina Farley, town meeting member, Precinct 16. I agree with Kathy about smart growth. I've been around a long time in the affordable housing industry, and smart growth is one of those terminologies, the first requirement of which was within roughly a quarter mile of good public transportation. You don't have to live in South Brookline to hear the cries about Bus 51 and no service on Sundays or holidays, whatever, let alone really good public, reliable public transportation. So that's number one. It does not qualify for that alone. Number two, with due respect, Ken, I bought my house almost 50 years ago. I bought for my in-laws. They were part of the negotiation with the Hancock Insurance Company, and it was always called a buffer zone. And it was called a perpetual buffer zone. And that's the best I can tell you. So I'm going to be one of the holdups that doesn't call it, call it a green belt, because I got memory and I got history there. Finally, anybody who has some experience with 40Bs knows there are two ways you stop a 40B that actually prevail in stopping a 40B, and one is public safety, and one is the environment. I don't understand why we haven't done, hired a consultant on the environment. I found underground streams at, at the engineering department last week that are right there in Hancock Village, because they're in the maps that our town has. We need to know how that's addressed. That might account for Selectman Daley's awareness of all the flooding that goes on there. My daughter used to skate on one of those buffer zones every winter. It flooded over and she would ice skate there. And the other thing is, we have always used our town public safety top people, the police chief and the fire chief, on any recommendation that could be affected, and they've gone out and taken a look and they make a recommendation. I don't understand why in the draft report I looked at last week, it did, it said it ought to be done. Fire chief can go out there in 15 minutes and tell you, you can't get a, a fire truck around, let alone a quint. This could be life-threatening because of the, even on Sherman, Sherman Road and Gary Road, not Jerry Road, there's another one that people have changed. You can't safely get by when they do have calls there for, for emergency calls. They have them there almost every day. I mean, that's just the nature of, of older people. And they, it's very much a blockage on a real street. This is just one of them, the Beverly Road one goes to a dead end. We need to look at that, and I don't know why that wasn't in the report, because that's a simple one. We get the fire chief to simply go take a look and talk about the, the configuration for fire equipment to get up there and health equipment.
Given that, we need to hear from other speakers, would you be willing to put your comments into writing, send them in an email, particularly the comments that you've made about the underwater, underground water and?
It's in the 1912 map, right upstairs on the fourth floor. I've already had it zeroed.
Although it will be in our minutes, if you send an email, we can forward it to the DPW to take a look and they'll give us a technical response. Okay. And also, when the traffic study is done, they'll look at fire safety issues as well.
Yeah, I think that should be in the application. We don't want to do that after they approve it. If they are aware that it's a safety issue now, they may not approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kuchar?
Hello, right now I'm speaking as a member of the NCD. Live on Beverly Road.
You, you're welcome to speak.
Thank you. Cara actually addressed one of the issues that, that I had been concerned about, and that's on, mostly on Beverly Road, where there seem to be these four-foot berms, which are going to be built beside, behind some houses, and then it falls off. And to me, you know, forget I live on Beverly Road, but for any place that has a backyard that has water issues and then all of a sudden it's unequal in height, this makes no sense whatever. And I read the entire Chestnut Hill Realty summary of what they want to do and their reasons for doing it, and their consultant says that, you know, everything is workable and solvable. But to me, common sense says if you've got four-foot distance, height difference between a butter's home and then a home behind you, a, a townhouse or whatever they're calling it, that's something to be concerned about. The other thing I want to point out is about the garages, and it's not right here, is that they added a feature which, to me, is quite interesting and fits nowhere into the original Hancock Village or the surrounding neighbors, which is, I, I call it a spire and a coppola.
Yeah.
And so it's not just, you know, a garage, and then there's, it's a four-car garage. So when I took a look at the plan and I thought, well, that's certainly interesting, and I
There you go.
Have absolutely no clue, because to me it looks like we could all go and worship there on Sundays. And so it would be a small congregation, but, you know, on the other hand, that doesn't fit into anything, except I see where they're trying to do it with the garage mat, you know, matching the house. The other thing I want to mention is Dick made a really good presentation. He talked about the undulating, you know, green belt, whatever anybody wants to call it. It's beautiful, it's gorgeous, and the one thing that's going to happen, and Cara can speak to this, is that those mature trees, which are such a feature, and it was deliberately designed to soften and give kids and families a place to picnic under, to add to the feeling of a park within an urban setting. And in some of their literature, actually, they do talk about their, their wonderful park space, where, you know, you'll never want to leave, because we, we will present you with everything you could possibly want. Those trees, for 99.9%, correct me if I'm wrong, Cara, are going to be chopped down. Now, in one design that I saw on Russett Road in front of the new apartments, there's a circle and there's a picture of a tree, and it says, "This tree will be kept." And I, of course, was very happy to hear that a tree would be kept. What I'm very upset about is 99% of these mature 70-year-old trees will just be buzzsawed to the ground in order to plant this in a place which, in terms of the cer- the whole history of, of, of what Olmsted and Ring Associates did and the circulation patterns and everything that makes Hancock Village what it is, and we've seen it tonight, that's just like buzzsawed out, and this new sort of generic place where it could be plopped down in any town square in any city USA, America, is going to be placed. And there's really, to my mind, no thought in terms of how I'm looking at what the criteria for the NCD is and looking at these buildings in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Poo?
I'm just going to move this. Okay, my name is Bill Poo. I'm a town meeting member, Precinct 16, and I'm speaking for a group of neighbors called Preserve Brookline. I want to comment on the proposal for Hancock Village, or maybe we should call it a re-proposal, because it just redoes the proposal that we discussed about six months ago. It's also with some deja vu that I speak here on the same issue again every year, every summer, it seems. And I just want to, at the outset, thank the town for all the work it did on the last letter, which was really extensive and quite exceptional, I think. And I know you're putting the same effort into the current letter. So the first proposal from Chestnut Hill Realty on the four, on a 40B last fall, proposed 271 units in 12 buildings with onsite parking. And this was reviewed by Mass Development, and they had come to a decision that it was inappropriate for 40B eligibility. And after that decision was made, but before Chestnut Hill Realty received any letter, Chestnut Hill Realty withdrew its proposal. And in its draft, finding Mass Development considered the project to be inappropriate because of its incompatibility with the site. And that was based on consideration of the existing site plan, the building massing, the topography, and the environment. So the agency noted that the plan would eliminate the existing green belt buffer, green belts, and the abutting single-family homes. And Mass Development also found that the setbacks were inadequate, and the project included a hulking apartment building that was totally inappropriate for the site. So as re-proposed by Chestnut Hill Realty, we have exactly the same proposal as, as has already been noted. It's a massive and disproportionate plan whose main goal seems to be to shoehorn as many bricks, as much brick and mortar as possible into a small space, which happens to be the same space that we value as the green belt between Hancock Village and its neighbors. In fact, as we've all noted already, the re-proposal is in all respects the same or maybe worse than the prior proposal with respect to the green space. Now, some commentators have highlighted that the reduction in the number of units to, to 192 is a significant compromise, but that disregards the fact that the apartments are bigger, so that the approximate square footage of the new development is almost the same as the original proposal. And even more significant, when considering the factors that were noted by Mass Development, this proposal will pretty much eviscerate the green space, just as the first one did, and it will replace buildings with the same footprint, the same height, even more pavement and more structures. So Chestnut Hill Realty characterized this land as underutilized, but I think they completely miss the tremendous value that the space holds to Hancock Village residents and the wider community, as we've seen today. On a daily basis, I can look out my window and see children and adults enjoying the, the green space, and it's obvious it's a defining character of Hancock Village. They characterize their plan as smart infill, but I think we should rename it as unwise green fill. So. So in its re-proposal, Chestnut Hill Realty took a lot of space to express its compassionate concern for the lack of affordable housing in Precinct 16. However, the additional affordable housing that Chestnut Hill Realty is proposing is actually quite small. They're proposing 38 units out of, which is the minimum that they, they would need for a 40B out of 192. Now, because this is an add-on development, it doesn't consider that there were already 530 units there that were originally built as affordable housing, so that the percentage of actual affordable units would be 38 out of 722.
Bill, is that in Brookline or including the Boston?
Now, Boston has, if we include Boston, it's 789, so if you add 38 on top of that, it's an even smaller percentage. If you say it.
And not permanently affordable either.
If you look at it a little bit differently, the losses that the community would suffer by Chestnut Hill Realty's project vastly outweighs the benefits that Chestnut Hill Realty would provide in terms of affordable housing. So this proposal weighs on the wrong side of the balancing test, that is the basis for a 40B, for the 40B law. It's also important to know a little bit of history about Chestnut Hill Realty as a landlord. Chestnut Hill Realty is the reason that there is no affordable housing in Precinct 16. When Chestnut Hill Realty acquired Hancock Village, all 530 Brookline apartments were subject to rent control. With the change in the rent control law, Chestnut Hill Realty took its own initiative and in one fell swoop eliminated all of the affordable housing in Precinct 16. So their reasoning is at best circular and at worst disingenuous. They should be expressing remorse for the lack of affordable housing in Precinct 16, rather than using their own anti-affordable housing decisions to justify their self-centered push for unwise green fill. So Chestnut Hill Realty's resort to 40B will have an enormous toll on Brookline and for little gain. This is exactly what it seems to be, a cynical tactic by Chestnut Hill Realty to subvert zoning through the manipulation of a well-intended law. We have to encourage Mass Development to recognize that this is a re-proposal of a massive and inappropriate development that it was originally prepared to reject. And it's a project that would waste the resources of the Commonwealth in the town and would have no significant impact on affordable housing. Thank you.
And, and I can assume that there will be comments coming from Preserve Brookline as a part of the submission to Mass Development?
Yes, we're preparing it.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Poo before you run away? Anybody?
No.
Nope, okay, thank you very much. Is there someone else here who, who would like to comment?
Hi, I'm Joanie Burstein from South Street and on the board of the SBNA, the South Brookline Neighborhood Association. And we have relied greatly on Bill Poo and Preserve Brookline to be looking into all of this, and there's been a lot of email flurry of activity and a lot of neighbors have come and a lot of neighbors are not here, as is typical in August, to support, but I've gotten many, many emails saying that they support the findings that. but I've gotten many, many emails saying that, um, they support the findings that, uh, that Bill and his group have done, so I just wanted to add the SBNA voice to this.
Yes, thank you. And, and I will, um, actually, would like to say for public record that the town did request an extension of time past Labor Day, so there would be an opportunity for more public participation, and it was rejected, but we did make that request.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the public, or anybody else? Yes, please come forward.
Uh, this is some problem with communication with Joni and me, because, um, I was gonna speak a little bit on behalf of the SBNA. I'm Alyssa Jonas, Precinct, um-
And you may do so.
Sixteen. And what I also wanted to say, just as Joni did, that basically, because Preserve Brookline pretty much reflects, um, the neighborhood's interests, that basically, we've become very integrated, and so there isn't really a separate SBNA entity and a Preserve Brookline entity. Um, that being said, I, I just wanna give a few reminders, um, and thoughts. Um, first of all, I do wanna point out that Hancock Village already was the largest affordable housing development that was ever built in Brookline, and that the whole of Hancock Village, which is primarily in Brookline, but also partially in Boston, remains to this day at seven-hundred-eighty-nine units, I think, um, larger than any other housing development that's ever been constructed in Brookline, including the Brook House. So, it is a development that's there, it's massive, and, um, it's just kind of mind-boggling to think that it should be substantially increased when it's already so large. Uh, second also, to remind everyone that a huge swath of green space was already eliminated to build this development. And the reason it was approved by the town and by the neighborhood was precisely because it was to provide affordable housing. The only reason that the development is less affordable now than in the past is because the current owner has raised rents. Though I do differ with Bill, I still think it's affordable, I don't think it's outrageously priced, and, um, I guess I'll just mention that I, uh, I, I think in the first, well, in the first place, I don't think that the town or the neighborhood would have approved the major destruction of so much green space, um, for such a large development, had it not been for affordable units. And it was also a particular type of affordable units. It was to enable families who didn't have the financial wherewithal to purchase single-family homes to be able to live in a similar manner. It's townhouses, uh, with privacy of each of the units, and lots and lots of green space, which single-family houses usually have, and apartment living does not. And that's still preserved to this day. Families that cannot afford, single-family houses still get that benefit out of Hancock Village. It's not large apartment buildings, they are, it is somewhat more dense, actually, it's substantially more dense than the rest of the neighborhood, but it's still such that you can feel that you are living amongst green space, and it's rental, I don't, there's no other place in Brookline where you can get that. I also wanna remind everyone that there was an explicit contract to memorialize the guidelines to ensure that the housing would be attractive, match the scale of the surrounding neighborhoods, and protect the green space that was designed by Olmstead Associates, which left much of the land preserved as woods and parkland. And the agreement was incorporated into the town law that enchan- that changed the zoning, um, and it was intended, and it says explicitly in the contract, that it was intended to govern all successive owners. Now, we all know by now that the town neglected to record, um, the written agreement, um, in the, um, um, in the registry. However, the owner stated, or the, the current owner stated at a public meeting that they were aware of this contract. And you only need a recording for constructive notice, you don't need it if the owner has actual notice. So, um, I, I mean, there's a whole bunch of other legal issues, I realize, about the thirty years, but this was all there. But, uh, with regard to the green space, it's not in the written agreement, um, can, only because the way that was insured for posterity was because it was zoned single, it was never changed from single-family zoning. And the reality is, is that it's such a narrow space that it can't fit single-family houses and a street, which is another reason why the proposal seems so bizarre. How can you safely, and even, is there even a feasible way of building all those townhouses and streets and have it be safe, as Regina mentioned? Uh, however, it's discussed over and over again in all the planning documents, um, Hancock Insurance discusses this green space buffer zone, it, it was clearly part of the plan, there's, there was no question about that. And, let's see. It is dense, again, because it's cluster housing, which enables density, and at the same time, provide green space. And, um, it's just ironic that this is kind of something that was way ahead of its time, but the current owner sees this ex- this green space now as excess land, and I think I quote from the owner, where they say it's underutilized land that should be developed. Um, and in two thousand nine, as we all know, they developed, they proposed the four-hundred-sixty-six units, when that didn't go over well with the town and the neighborhood, they've now gone on to, um, the forty B process. They threatened that they would do so to the neighborhood, to get the neighborhood to approve the plan that they had originally wanted to do, the four-hundred-sixty-six units. It didn't happen, and now they're doing forty B. And I think it would be really unwise for Mass Development to support this kind of forty B, because I think it sets a terrible precedent. There's enough controversy about forty Bs and the conflict between neighborhoods and affordable housing. Hancock Village was a very successful cooperative effort between a neighborhood, a town, and a developer, to build affordable housing.
In an interesting way, it actually is sort of like the friendly forty B the town did with the planning office in St. Adents, to be honest. I've thought about that recently, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, though maybe there was more support at the neighborhood level for, um-
Well-
For Hancock Village.
Yeah, could be, but, but we obviously, as a community, have done this before successfully, I guess, is what I'm saying. Anyway, I have to ask you, please, to conclude, because I think we have other people and we have other business.
I, I just think that strategically, I don't think it would be the kind of forty B that Mass Development would wanna support, given the history of how Hancock Village was derived, and the expectations that the neighborhood and the town had for the owners.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Gallatano?
Uh, good evening, Tom Gallatano, uh, town meeting member, Precinct sixteen. A couple of comments and a question. Uh, the first comment is, first to thank everyone from the town, Mr. Garvey and others who have worked so hard at marshaling all the resources that have gone into the presentations tonight. Uh, every time I come to one of these meetings, I learn something new. Uh, the presentation that was done tonight was just masterful, and so, you're to be congratulated for that. I know you led that effort. Um, I especially liked, uh, your description of, you know, it's been called a buffer, it's been called green space, it's been called a green belt. You, at one point, I think, referred to it as parkland, and, and that's how I've always looked at this. When I moved into this neighborhood close to twenty years ago, one of my first interactions with a neighbor was with somebody who'd lived there since nineteen-thirty-three, and, uh, she was quite old at the time. And she told me about how her kids used to walk up the fairways to get to the Baker School, because there was no Hancock Village when they first moved in, and their kids would literally walk up, uh, the fairways of what was then the Nine Hole Golf Course to get to school. Uh, those times have changed, but nonetheless, this really is parkland, it's parkland that is used, uh, by people who live in Hancock Village, it's parkland that's used on a regular basis by the people who live in the surrounding neighborhood, and I think we ought to call it for what it is, parkland. I would like to know, uh, the following. Uh, I know that the town was able to obtain, I believe by a FOIA request, a copy of the letters that have been referenced, um, the drafts that were prepared by Mass Development immediately prior to Chestnut Hill Realty deciding to withdraw its initial forty B application. I'd be curious to know whether or not, um, there is a plan to specifically reference, um, Mass Development's apparent intention on rejecting that first proposal, and what if any, um, impact that is likely to have on Mass Development's consideration of this, uh, re-proposal, as I think it's been correctly described.
Uh, then perhaps we can refer this to Ms. Murphy, who is giving us her astute legal advice.
Um, I haven't yet decided whether I'm going to quote directly from the draft memo that Mr. Starzak wrote, um, to Mass Development, um, which I have a copy of, but I have actually gone through it very carefully, and, and at the very least, our response will, um, mirror his comments and use some of his terms. Um, I, I just, I just need to think about whether we want to, you know, pull out direct quotes, but it will, it will definitely, um, rely on his, um, reasoning, so that it's, it will be clear, I think, to Mass Development that we have read his memo.
Um, I'm gonna ask you a question, which I will appreciate if you choose not to respond, but it does, and has crossed my mind several times, that there is a curious time relationship between the drafting of the undelivered letter and the decision of Chestnut Hill Realty to withdraw its proposal. Do you have any thoughts or comments on that timeframe?
I don't.
Okay. Didn't think you would.
Um, don't wanna speculate.
That's fine, I have my own thoughts.
[laughter]
Uh, and I won't speculate either. Um, okay, do we have other, um, individuals who would like to come forward with a comment? Yes, Ms. Bruton, would you like to wrap us up?
Sure, just wanted to remind everybody that, um, any comments are due to Mass, um, Development by August thirtieth, and outside, as you're leaving, um, on the table, there's several copies, just one-page copies, it has the address of where it is in comments too, as well as the comment deadline. Um, so just, if people are getting ready to leave, look for that on your way out.
Okay, and I would just say that, that the town would welcome any, um, written comments that might enlighten or help direct us, so, um, please feel free, you can send them to us by email, and direct them to Ms. Bruton. Um, and, uh, we will obviously, if, uh, people are preparing written comments of their own, just be aware of making sure that Mass Development receives it by the deadline, because they're pretty bureaucratic about that, and they will not accept late submissions.
One question just occurred to me, uh, in response to Kara's last comment. Have any, um, residents of Hancock Village, uh, expressed an interest in this, particularly in opposition to this? Uh, in light of the Mr. Garvey's report that stresses so much the, the parkland, the green space, the, the buffer, and, and how it's used by Hancock Village residents themselves, I wonder if we might outreach to someone to help support the, the importance of those spaces from, from the tent, the existing tenants' point of view.
Yeah, so, um, the planning department, and as far as I know, other town departments have not gotten any calls or comments from Hancock Village residents. Of course, they are renters, and their landlord is Chestnut Hill Realty.
I understand.
We have had, heard general comments over the years from residents who have reported, um, just as Dick Garber had a casual conversation with a particular resident, um, but nobody that wanted to be, you know, on the record or in any way involved.
If those residents are out there, they should know that there are fair housing laws and consumer protection laws that would protect them in that instance, but- Alyssa, do you have a comment?
I actually have been to a few parties on the green space, run by tenants who live there, and a lot of them have told me that they moved there specifically for the green space, and one of them offered to knock on the doors of all the residences to, um, actually get their input, and I didn't wanna make them do that, and thought, well, I don't know. But anyways, there's definitely residents who have a strong interest.
Yeah, but I, I, you know, I, I actually had heard that, um, people, not surprisingly, are concerned.
And maybe they feel reluctant, as tenants of the applicant, to speak.
Hi, Robin Kuchar.
Ms. Kuchar.
Beverly Road, as myself. Um, I actually know several people that have lived for many, many years at Hancock Village, and I've gotten firsthand reports of all the things that they're dissatisfied with, and what's going on. And I've asked, uh, and actually, one of them came to one of the Hancock Village Planning Committee meetings, and brought down the house with just a single line, which was just fabulous. However, as you pointed out, Ms. DeWitt, um, these people are scared, and they're scared to come and talk because they are renters.
Sure.
And while, you know, I've said to them, I understand that, um, and I cer- I do, so that they're out there, and they have opinions, and I've heard them, um, but they will not go on record for reasons that I personally understand completely.
Thank you. Okay, um, any comments from members of the board? Then I thank you all for coming, I thank, uh, our, um, hard-working, uh, NCD Commission to pull this final, uh, document together, and, um, I look forward to seeing it. Uh, we have one final action to take.
To vote.
Sorry, we're gonna vote, yes, all right, we're gonna vote, yes. Um, in recognition, whoops.
Selectmen Goldstein's trying to give us a little mood lighting for the rest of our meeting.
In recognition of the fact that the Board of Selectmen will not be meeting, that is a public announcement I'm making, uh, until the Tuesday af- well, actually, it's not the Tuesday after Labor Day, we are next meeting on September tenth, um, in order for us to submit our comments by the deadline properly with, um, signatures, I propose the following vote: To authorize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and/or the Town Administrator to execute and to submit to Mass Development on behalf of the Board of Selectmen the town's response to Chestnut Hill Realty's June tenth, two thousand thirteen, application for comprehensive permit site eligibility with respect to the residences at South Brookline, which response shall comprise the town's written comments from local boards pursuant to seven-six-zero-CMR fifty-six-point-zero-four-parenns-three, um, which is a regulation. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
And Selectmen Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We will sign the document. Okay, um-
Thank you.
Do we have building, uh, staff with us anymore? No?
Tony, no, no, no.
The Commissioners here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Oh, ah, Mr. Bennett. Uh, we had a couple of items from earlier, that maybe you can help us with. Right. Uh, we held these, um, and if, if we could, uh, jump back to D and E in our miscellaneous calendar, um, they, they have to do with renovations to, um, fire stations one and four, and, well, they're, they're all fire station items, so, um, are you able to give us answers to questions?
I can do my best.
Okay.
Tony was in the building.
Right, Tony came, Tony left.
He may come back, but I told him I'd do, I'd do what I could.
Tony, yeah, Tony actually was here when we were starting the Hancock Village discussion, and he, I think he went downstairs, I don't know if you can-
We were in the Building Commission meeting, that has since-
They're having a Building Commission meeting.
Right.
That has since adjourned, but he did, uh, head out for a minute, said he would try to come back, but if I can try to answer some questions, I'll try, I'll do my best.
Um, Selectmen Daly, you have questions?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, to just get a quick rundown on what we're doing at all the fire stations, and I, I know in the past, some members of the Advisory Committee have had strong feelings about fire station renovations, so I'm wondering if they've been involved in these discussions about what we're doing now?
Uh, the Advisory has been very involved in the structural improvements that we're proposing for Station Number Seven.
Okay.
Um, the topic of the Building Commission meeting that just adjourned was discussion between, uh, Building Department staff, the Building Commission, uh, we had a representative from CBI there, and a representative from the, uh, Advisory Committee. And it was concluded that they would proceed with design drawings, and at the same time, do an analysis on some of the, uh, alternatives that they, and members of the Advisory Committee have suggested with respect to, uh, some of the structural improvements, in filling, uh, slab with flowable fill versus, um- structural improvements in filling slab with flowable fill versus slab on grade with earth compacted soil. So that's something that we're going to move forward with. And I think at this point, they're comfortable with that. And we will keep them informed.
Should this contract with CBI be amended to include that further examination? I know, I know that there are significant, in the views of some, significant issues about filling the basement and the impact on the location of some equipment and what impact that will have on the functioning of the fire station, if, you know, if you've got a manhole in front of a doorway. And, and also impacts on the operation if you have to remove the slab.
Right.
Is all of that included in this contract? Or do we need to amend this contract?
The contract doesn't have to be amended. To move forward with Station 1, they're just examining the slab.
No, Station 1 is fine.
Station 1.
Yeah, it's a Station 7 issue.
With respect to Station 7, those funds would allow them to proceed, as we just discussed at the Building Commission meeting. There may have to be an amendment to it to increase funding for them to do their estimating and design analysis between one proposal and another, which is what the Commission had just asked them to do in the Advisory Committee, or the member of the Advisory Committee that was there concurred. So that's something that we directed them to move forward on.
So they will be doing that and then back to the Building Commission with some resolution? Or what?
They'll move forward on the design and schematics and they will go back to the Building Commission with the estimated costs.
I, I guess, Dan, the question is how you go forward on the design and schematics if you don't know what the solution is going to be, whether it's going to be fill versus structural supports, what kind of fill it's going to be.
Based on CBI and the representative and number of members of the Building Commission, they're all very comfortable with moving forward with a design of a slab on grade because they, they understand and CBI has pretty consistent that flowable fill is about two times the cost of what they're proposing. So he's just going to demonstrate to them at the end of the day that the cost is up here for flowable fill, it's here for what we're proposing, and there won't be a need to modify or change the plans.
Yeah. I mean, this is not the place to debate it, but flowable fill is more expensive. The compacted soil, I think, requires the removal of the slab.
Correct, yes.
Which flowable fill does not. And that has implications for the operation of the station.
Yes. The Fire Chief is fully aware of how this will proceed with the removal of the slab and the effect on the operations. He attended the first five or 10 minutes. He expressed his willingness to try to get this to move forward.
Right.
They did discuss at length the oil and gas separator, which can go inside or outside of the building and the effects that that would have if there was an emergency and that was being maintained, what would happen. And we do have some of those conditions currently. You know, Station 5 on Babcock has an oil and grease separator that's outside. I don't believe it's in the apron. It's off to the side. So it's not unheard of for the Town of Brookline to have oil and gas separators on the exterior of the building. I think most of the other stations have them on the interior.
Right.
All right. We're ready to move these? Selectmen Daly?
I'm satisfied.
Okay. Then I move that we approve and execute a contract for improvements at Fire Stations Number 1 and 4 in the amount of $19,500 with Garcia Galuska de Souza. And I move that we approve the following contract amendments with CBI Consulting in connection with structural improvements for Fire Stations Number 1, slab-on-deck chloride testing, and Fire Station Number 7, design, development, and construction documents. And the amount, sorry, slab-on-deck $5,600 and Fire Station 7, design, development, $47,845. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen Benka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And I would just note that the Fire Station 7 is not only design, development, and construction documents, but also bidding and construction administration, I believe, within that.
That is true.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Catching up now to our item schedule for 8:00 PM. I apologize, it's about an hour late. Just exactly, actually. Licensing, we have before us a request for a change of name for Espresso Royal Cafe. Is there someone here? Please come forward to the microphone. You want to be Pavement Coffee House?
Yes.
Okay.
It's another company that I already own in Boston, so this would be our fourth location.
And are you saying they'll all have the same name?
Yes.
Ah.
So this is the only store that doesn't have the same name.
Got it.
So for brand continuity.
All right. Making them all consistently branded. I believe everything is in order in the applications. This is pretty non-controversial, but it is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or against the change of name from Espresso Royal Cafe to Pavement Coffee House at 736 Commonwealth Avenue?
I'll speak in favor, but I like the name Pavement Coffee House.
All right. Very well.
That was all me.
Always willing to take a stand there.
I am.
All right. Do we have any questions with regard to this proposal?
It's up to you all.
Okay. Seeing and hearing no comments, I'm going to move that we approve the application of LSM Limited doing business as Espresso Royal Cafe, Lawrence Margulis owner, for a change in DBA from Espresso Royal Cafe to Pavement Coffee House at 736 Commonwealth Avenue. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen Benka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
You have your pavement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is a pledge of a liquor license for Rebelle Restaurant. Paul, Mr. Maslow?
Yes.
So tell us about your application, please.
Okay. Well, the, the name of the restaurant is Rebelle.
Sorry, Rebelle.
That's okay.
I'll get it next time.
I don't know what you'd like me to tell you other than we've pledged a license to Brookline Bank.
Right.
To back up a loan that we took out.
Okay. And this is actually a pretty standard arrangement for restaurants. I'm aware that it's a pretty standard arrangement. He's just got to speak for himself since he's not got anybody representing him. My understanding is the paperwork is all in order. Are there any questions for Mr. Maslow?
Is it part of any renovation or change in the nature of the business there?
Well, we bought an existing restaurant and we basically gutted it out and totally rebuilt the place. So we just opened last night.
So you're not.
Oh, is it just last night? I thought it was coming up this week. Last night?
We had a soft opening last week and we officially opened yesterday.
Okay. Opened to the public. Good.
This pledge of.
And we're glad to be part of Brookline.
Pledge of license isn't because you're planning something further. It wasn't the question.
I think the work's been done. Okay. Then this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor or against the proposal for the license to be pledged to Brookline Bank, seeing and hearing none? I move that we approve the application of Kikomon LLC doing business as Rebelle, Rebelle?
Yes.
Restaurant, holder of an all kinds beverage license as a common vixeler, 1665 Beacon Street, for a pledge of said license to Brookline Bank. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen Benka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to having you actively participating in our great dining in Brookline.
Appreciate that.
How did the opening go?
It's gone very well, actually. Very well. We're all pretty tired.
Yeah, I bet. Right. Sorry about the delay tonight.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is Takusan Sushi, 1223 Beacon Street. Change of directors, officers, et cetera.
Hi, good evening. The application is based on the transfer of shares of stock by existing shareholders to, to a new shareholder and to an existing shareholder. I think 100 shares each.
Right.
And as a result of this transfer, the departing shareholder resigned from his position on the board. And then the company appointed new board member, which was the new shareholder, who purchases 100%, 100 shares of stock, which is 10% of the outstanding, issue outstanding shares of stock. So that's the basic stuff with the application pending.
Yes, Selectmen Benka?
Yeah. May I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Will, there, there is a transfer of stock from Sunlin Chen 500 shares to Ken Chan 100 shares. So Sunlin Chen will continue to hold 400. Is that?
Yes.
And, okay, and.
He remains a majority shareholder, yes.
Okay. So he will, he will hold 400.
Correct.
There will be 400. And then.
Ken Chan is going to.
We'll have 100. And then the other 100 will be transferred.
Right. And that he's leaving.
Good.
And I just want to be clear for the record that there is no change in manager on the premises contemplated by any of these transfers.
No.
No. Operations will continue as they are.
And the new DBA name, which was approved.
Right. Right. Okay. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to be either in favor or in opposition to this application, seeing and hearing none? I believe we can take a vote. And I move that we approve the application of Ritz Asia Incorporated doing business as Takusan Sushi. Shulin Chen, President and holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license, common vixeler at 1223 Beacon Street, for a change in officers and directors and transfer of stock as below, from Shunli Chen, Song Yang Li, and Shunli Chen Jihun Chung and Hui En Liu directors, to Shunli Chen, President Treasurer, Song Yang Li Secretary, Shunli Chen, Ken Chan, and Hui En Liu Directors. I know, got one more step to go. And to approve a transfer of stock from Shunli Chen, 500 shares, to Ken Chan, 100 shares. And from Jihun Chung, 100 shares, to Chang Bin Zou, 100 shares. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen Benka.
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. And next, we have our continued hearing on the application for open air parking at 3 Washington Street. Ms. DeBakerly? Sorry about the long wait.
No problem. It was entertaining.
So is Mr. Bennett still with us? Perhaps you'd come forward and just give us a review. I know we asked you to take a look at the premises and take, there were some particular questions that were raised at our last meeting. And since you're with us, I'd like you to have the opportunity to give us a report.
Sure. I followed up shortly after the hearing. I got a memo from Mel Clickner indicating five areas of concern. Subsequent to that, I set up a meeting on site with the property owner, John D. F. Bakerly. We reviewed each item individually. I asked that he put those concerns in writing and how he intended to address each one of them. He had done that through his daughter Christine. There were a couple of revisions that I had asked her to do. And at the end of the day, there was a memo that I sent up earlier today with the attachment. She had a correspondent. She put five issues in, in writing. I added two criteria, which I forwarded over to Christine. One was to demarcate or try to indicate on the property where the actual town line is. It's difficult when you go to that property to find what Brookline, what is Boston. That'll help us with our area of jurisdiction.
Right.
I also asked that they agree that no Zip Cars will be parked on the Brookline side until in such time as they get approval from the Town of Brookline to have Zip Cars on the premises. I was in contact earlier today with a new Zip Car representative and she indicated, Lisa Feldman, she indicated that she would comply with that and be in touch with the owners and follow up with the appropriate course of action for approval. And I think if the Board is so inclined with those conditions, an open air parking license could be issued. And then we'll follow up in short order with a Zip Car application. Depending upon what the application consists of, I think my quick review of zoning, she keeps it to less than 10%. She can do that as of right, which would be one car. If they want to exceed that number, they would have to go to the zoning board for a special permit, which could take, you know, three to four months.
Okay. All right. Ms. DeR, tell me how you pronounce her name. DeR Bakerly?
There's 15 ways. They all work.
Well, give me the one you like.
Dear Bakerly.
Dear Bakerly. Okay. Thank you very much. I gather you participated in the drafting of these items and have agreed to them. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are there questions from members of the Board with regard to this? Yes, Selectmen Daly?
Yeah. I, I do have a question. So the, the total is, is five spaces. Is that right?
Plus after an application is processed, possibly Zip Cars. Is that in addition to the five?
So that was one of my questions. Is it five spaces plus Zip Car if she goes through that process?
Correct.
I can just, there is a, there is a zoning board decision for this property from back in 98, 99, that limits the maximum amount of spaces that can be dedicated to open air parking at seven. So yes, Zip Cars could come in and take up the remaining two, but you can do no more than seven with respect to an open air parking license.
Okay. So it's seven total, including Zip Cars.
The application, I think, before you right now is just five.
Okay. So my, my other question is, I know you had asked, and Ms. DeR Bakerly has agreed, to paint the spaces yellow, the open air parking spaces, so that we can see if there's parking in excess or whatever. But are, are, my question is, are you going to, I, I went out myself and tried to take a look. And I have to admit, I had trouble figuring out, well, what's Boston and what's Brookline and which spaces are we talking about and everything. So the, the question is, would there still be these other spaces painted white? Because I feel like when you have a bunch of spaces marked out, whether white or yellow, you're kind of inviting people to park there. And so I would like to see only the correct number of spaces marked and the paint, you know, the, the painting blacked out on the excess number of spaces.
That would just be a burden on us because we have our mechanics who park there. I myself park there when I go there. My father does and my younger brother. And one of my other employees who does car detailing.
So you mean you park there when you're working for the day?
Yeah. So to just wipe out all those spots, we would just kind of be like parking altogether in this like mass jungle.
Okay.
It would just be like an undue burden.
Okay.
I, I think that the color change is a good idea.
Okay. Let me ask the Commissioner again then. So I do know at some other gas stations in town, there seems to be a similar situation of they seem to rent out, I think the one on Harvard Street rents out some spaces, but they also seem to use spaces as they're moving cars in and out that are being serviced. And what, what is the situation? I mean, are, so when, in terms of the requirement for them to have this license for the open air parking, that's for cars that can park there 24 hours a day? That doesn't include these cars that are parked there for somebody's working for the day? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So her view of this is correct?
Right. On that side of, of the building, if you walk up to the sidewalk, there is a monument or a marker that delineates Boston and Brookline. And based on some plans that I had in my office and discussions with John D. F. Bakerly, if you stand on that marker and there's a building off into the back, about the back left-hand side of the building, I think which they own, and that's where the snow will be plowed, is the approximate town line. You'll find that there are, go on our record. You'll find that there are, I'm going on rec- recollection, there's easily five and possibly seven, the other two spaces might straddle the Brookline-Boston line, and then there are two spaces right up against the building that are totally in Boston. So on that side, there are, are maybe eight or nine spaces, five of them would be dedicated to open air, the other four would be dedicated to, uh, employees, and some of them are in Brookline and some of them are in Boston.
And two would be zip car if they...
And two would potentially be zip car.
Be zip car, okay.
And they already have them, uh, they've got five on the Boston side, so the zip cars on the Boston side, and they park to the, on the rear of the, uh, to the rear of the building.
Can I just ask one other, um, point that, that your memos back and forth don't seem to have addressed? We had a, and, and maybe Mr. Klickner forgot to alert you to this, but we had a complaint from neighbors that they were possibly using, that they do a lot of, um, leaf blowing, um, and possibly in violation of our, uh, some of the restrictions of our leaf blowing statute, which only allows leaf blowing at certain times of year, and you have to have a low decibel leaf blower and so forth, and I noticed this agreement doesn't mention anything about the leaf blowing issue, and I wonder if we can just add a line about that the leaf blowing must be done in compliance with the Brookline statute, with the Brookline, is it, what is the regulation?
Bylaw.
Bylaw, yeah.
Bylaw.
I'm right here and giving you my good faith and saying that I will be in compliance if you feel the need to put that in writing, I think it's unnecessary and unessential, everything that I said I've done, I, I would do, I've done, and I will, um, be in compliance with the leaf blower, I now understand that there's certain times and that our leaf blower is much louder than what is allowed in Brookline, so, uh, I'm giving my good faith word, saying that we won't blow during times we're not allowed to, and to get a new blower for when we do leaf blow.
Okay, um...
Could I, may I, while, while you're concentrating here?
Selectman Benka, right, come, jump in.
Yeah, I, I actually, um, uh, Nancy would agree with your initial comment about blacking out the lines for the other parking spaces, I think, um, the mechanics and the detailers and the owners, I think, should be able to park without lines delineating their spaces, they know where those spaces are, they know where they can park. I think once you have lines in, whether they're white or yellow, um, it invites renting those spaces out, and, um, I think spaces without lines are unrentable, uh, spaces with lines become rentable. And I think it's very difficult to enforce whether a space is being rented or is not being rented, uh, uh, on the part of the, uh, building department, uh, but I think, um, not having the lines there, uh, becomes a method of self-enforcement to ensure that the spaces that are rented under the open air license are limited to the ones that are allowed under the open air license. So that would be my preference here.
Well, I'm gonna respectfully disagree, cause I honestly think colored lines would delineate those ones which are licensed and for safety's purposes, I happen to agree that having marked spaces, if you have four or five cars parked and they're coming and going at different times, um, i- it seems to me for the people who are on the premises and stay there, um, it, it's a much safer arrangement for there to be marked spaces. So, anyway.
I said, I said my piece.
That's okay, just...
All right, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna pursue that one, I would just, I would like, uh, to, um, um, just have the minutes reflect that you have agreed to, on the, the leaf blower issue, to comply with our bylaw on that, so we can tell the neighbors that we've talked to you, you understand, and you're gonna comply now.
We have the same leaf blower at my house in Winchester, and my dad uses it that loud at like six in the morning, so I'm sure my neighbors wish they could do the same thing.
Okay.
We will, we will send a copy of our bylaw to your, your neighbors in Winchester.
Right.
Brookline's very tough, tougher than Winchester. Like, here for the neighbors, so...
So, are we ready to, um, vote on this item, everybody? Selectman Benka, if you want to amend the, um, cause I think we're gonna refer to the, five items under, uh, on page thirteen dash thirty-six.
Well, I'm, let me just say, I'm, uh, I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay.
If that change isn't there.
Okay.
If two other people agree with me, we can come back and make the change.
Um, just so you know, I'm gonna, my intention is to abstain, cause I wasn't here for part one of this.
Okay, that's all right, um...
Then if one other person agrees with this...
So, uh, let me just understand what you're suggesting there.
He, he's, I think proposing that he will, um, not vote the open air parking license if there are going to be yellow painted spaces that are rented out and white painted spaces that are available but not under our licensing agreement.
Yeah, I, I would vote, I would vote for this if, uh, five A capacity for enforcement stated the five open air parking spaces will be painted yellow if they want, uh, and will be the only marked spaces on the Brookline portion of the property.
So the employee parking...
Would be unmarked.
Would be unmarked.
Just, uh, just unmarked.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, while I like the idea, I think that is more than we are asking of some other service stations, and so, I'm not gonna...
The problem is, this is, this is a, a, a service station or a property that has had a, a history of enforcement problems.
Well, I mean, but I would think if a police car is patrolling there at night, they should only see the, the vehicles in the yellow spaces, there shouldn't be any in the white spaces at night, because those are not, um...
Correct.
Rented out.
Are the, are, these licenses are up for renewal every year, right?
Yep.
So we would be, we have, we would have an opportunity...
There will be an opportunity to review this again.
If there are problems...
Before the end of December, well, that's not true, do we do these annually? June, right, right, these are June thirtieth ones, so this is actually, um, at the end of the si- or, you know, beginning of the new cycle, it'd be next, next spring, next, uh, May or June. Or we can review it sooner if we wish.
See, I'm, I'm, I'm actually inclined to agree with the chair on this one, gi- given that we have the oppor- the opportunity to revisit it.
Okay. All right, can I, can I just ask if you actually are gonna reference this page that we just, uh...
I am going to...
It's not that I don't trust you, it's my memory, I wanna know if, if we're referencing this into the, into the record, I wanna reference that you have agreed to comply with our bylaw on leaf blowers, so that, you know, when we're looking at material next year, it's in there.
Right.
Sure thing.
We, we would, um, I'm gonna move that we approve the application of Christine DeR Bakerly for a license to conduct and maintain an open air parking lot at number three Washington Street Bartlett Crescent for five automobiles, on the condition that the, uh, language, the items, uh, one through five in the attachment dash, the thir- page thirteen dash thirty-six, uh, constitute an agreement which will be abided by as a condition of the license approval, and on the record, there's also a verbal agreement to be in compliance with the town's noise by law and the town's, um, leaf blower by law. Okay? All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
No.
Selectman Goldstein abstains? Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, go get your yellow paint and your low-octane leaf blower.
Calm down.
Thank you. All right. Final item is discussion and possibly appointing an override study committee. I'm going to, um, um, ask our town administrator, who has, um, at our request, spent a fair amount of time thinking about how we can reasonably and fairly come up with a list of, um, members and candidates for our, uh, override study committee. We, we are, uh, extremely fortunate that we had thirty applications, um, from highly qualified individuals, and, um, each person had a different sort of, uh, skill set and different qualifications, and we asked our town administrator to do a review of those, uh, characteristics and qualifications, and he has thoughtfully compiled, um, uh, by category, uh, we asked about finance and budgeting, we asked about government policy and administration, we asked about real estate planning and development, uh, people who have expertise and education, and then there were, um, a group that, um, were harder to characterize and, and sort of fell into other. But the, um, town administrator has spent a lot of time thinking about how to provide a strong, fair, and balanced, um, committee, and to help us with a process to get there. Um, I will admit, we've had some discussions, uh, individually with the town administrator, and therefore, we need to rely on him to provide the collective voice, because we don't deliberate about these things. It makes the, um, hub and spoke system is a little complicated and, and very sometimes slow. But I hope we will be able to come up with a methodology that everybody's comfortable with, and that will also get us to a very highly qualified, uh, group of people, uh, to serve on the override study committee. And I'm just gonna start off by saying, um, I see this group, having just, uh, with my colleagues, uh, Selectman Goldstein and Selectman Washinsky, reached a, uh, recommendation for the B, from the B Space Committee to the School Committee, after months of, uh, research and thoughtful deliberations, I believe the challenge to the override study committee is as great or greater, um, and I have great admiration and respect for anybody who is coming forward as a volunteer, and I suspect some of these people have no clue what they have, um, proposed that they undertake. Having said that, I also would like to acknowledge that we have the co-chair from the School Committee in the room with us, and even, maybe, would you like to join us? We have a little extra chair over here, and, and you can be part of the conversation. I, I think, um, having the, the voice...
Yeah, I think she, I think she asked me there to get a microphone.
Oh, sorry, well, that's true, you can, you need, if you wanna speak, you have to speak into the microphone, sorry, you get, you get the podium.
To the Wolf Dickoff, Vice Chairman of the School Committee, thank you, it's my pleasure to be here.
But thank you for being here, and, um, sorry we're running so late, but I think it's important that you be a part of this discussion. And I'm just gonna say briefly, from my perspective, in addition to the great challenge, this group has a very broad scope of work, they will be looking at the kinds of components that will eventually be, be able to be presented to the voters, um, asking people to willingly contemplate paying higher taxes, and the kinds of things that we are all going to be asking have to do with how we will achieve our, um, goals that are to solve the extraordinary increase in enrollment, uh, that brings with it a requirement for classrooms and/or other ways of accommodating students, and, um, at the same time, each classroom has to have a teacher, and as we increase the number of students and classrooms, therefore, there is a, another implication for the school operating budget, so it's not one or the other, it's both, and I think they are closely related and integrated. Um, I think the skill sets that we talked about, understanding about finance when, um, we, we spoke about real estate, I think we really meant, um, people who understand capital projects, particularly large, complicated ones, or at least multiple ones, um, uh, that we would be having to consider in order to provide enough classrooms. I think it's important that there are people, be people who are, I think we would all agree, um, good with figures, um, and who understand the analytical tools it takes to go through financial data. I also think we would need people who have an appreciation for and, uh, respect for one of the criteria that B Space had, which was that Brookline's educational system is one of our most valuable assets, and we should respect and protect it and preserve its reputation, and I think that will be another part of the task of the override study committee. So, it's a very broad and a very comprehensive, um, scope of work. So having said that, Mr. Klickner?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
What would you like to say?
Well, I would like to just, uh, follow up on your, uh, your summary, uh, and just to talk a little bit about what I've done and, uh, and how we can proceed this evening. So first of all, I do wanna, uh, say, uh, that, uh, you know, getting a committee of, uh, thirty applicants of all, uh, very qualified people who are very public spirited, um, is a difficult process, especially given the enormity of the task that, as you, as you mentioned, uh, this override study committee will be responsible for. So I, and, and, and the fact that we do it in a public setting, in a open meeting law setting, where it can be very difficult, just logistically, for a committee or any, any kind of decision like this to be done by committee, uh, you know, collaboratively at the, at the table, so, a- and then the other point is, is that, you know, I think, given the, um, uh, the fact that these are all very, uh, public spirited folks who, uh, who have reputations to withhold, I think we're, uh, I think we're all a little concerned about, you know, the fact that we're gonna have to, um, uh, not select more than we select, given the, the scope of this committee, um, you know, that we were, we want to be sensitive to that. So, in the spirit of that, I did a couple things. First of all, I did, as you suggested, um, uh, create categories of what I called skills and experience, and they are, as you mentioned, financial and budgetary, government policy and administration, real estate planning and development, and education, as the main skills and experience categories, and as you pointed out, I also created another category if people didn't quite fit in those, and also to identify those members who, uh, have had other service and town boards and commissions, which I think was, was important. So I, I did that, I found it very helpful to, uh, process to go through and, and identify people and categorize people in those ways, so that I could make sure, in my mind, that it was a balanced committee, um, and I, uh, hope you find it helpful as well. Uh, and then the next thing I did, which was obviously the hardest part, was try to see if I could create, uh, a committee that was a balanced from, from those, not only those skills and experience factors, but also to make sure that the committee represented the kind of diversity, um, that, uh, represented in our community, and, um, also took into consideration some less, uh, objective factors, frankly, you know, a lot of perceptions and, and interest that a lot of, uh, people have, um, and will, will, will be important for this committee to be successful in the ultimate o- uh, override, if that's the, uh, recommendation this committee. So I did, uh, create, uh, recommended slates, uh, depending on the size of the committee that the board determines. Um, the other point I would make is that, uh, I respect that, um, it's not perfect, in fact, I would do, with due respect, I would challenge anybody to, to put together a slate that had unanimous, unanimity, uh, by this board or, or anybody, it's just, just really an impossibility, given the number of candidates and the quality of the candidates. So I did my best, um, I am, you know, we talked about it as an embarrassment of riches, and I, I think that's a great term, and I'm personally embarrassed that I can't, you know, identify all of these people, but, uh, as you pointed out, it's, it is a limitation on the number of members on our committee, so I, I, so I did that. But I also respect that, um, you know, the board may not choose to go along with those, uh, those recommendations, or wish to pursue more of a collaborative process, uh, like a ballot initiative, you know, a ballot process, and if you choose to do that, uh, I'm here to support that, along with my staff, we can, we've kind of prepared for that in the event that you wanted to pursue that, that type of a process this evening. So, um, having said that, I respect whichever way the board wants to proceed.
Okay, um, so I think perhaps, um, I, I would certainly like to hear from Ms. Dickoff, but, uh, Selectman Benka, do you have some thoughts?
I'll hold for now.
Okay, and, um, perhaps we could hear from Ms. Dickoff, or would, I, I'm, I'm giving the, uh, opportunity for Ms. Dickoff to speak before members of the board, if that's comfortable with everybody, okay? Therefore, you have the opportunity to give us your thoughts.
Sure, thank you very much, um, you know, I think a couple things, one is, I just would like to echo the embarrassment of riches, um, we have a terrific town, and so many of the people, uh, that are on this, uh, list of candidates could be really... could be really excellent contributors, either on this board or some other board. So unfortunately, they now have a target on their backs as you all look for candidates for other boards and commissions and willing workers.
Yes, absolutely.
So that's unfortunate for them, but fortunate for us. You know, I think, you know, a couple of principles. I mean, one is the idea of an impartial board, an independent board, being so important. That was over and over, when I started asking for advice on what people thought was successful about the 2008 override committee, that was sort of the number one thing that people said, was a group of people who are highly credible, highly analytical, highly data-driven, and impartial, sort of not the usual suspects, not insiders. Which, of course, gave me pause, as somebody who's the vice chairman of the school committee, to be running it. And I felt personally put on notice, as I'm sure Selectman Benka feels as well, to ensure that we are as impartial as well in our deliberations and our leadership of the committee. So that's a big burden that I feel, and I feel the same thing when we think about impaneling this very important group on behalf of the full community. So I think that would be the first principle, is that when all is said and done before, however you choose to do it, before you take that final vote on the committee, that you look across the committee and say, yeah, we think this more or less, not only looks impartial, but actually will be impartial. The second thing that I would say is just to echo the town administrator, I absolutely believe that the idea of skill sets is important, and I like the four that he outlined and he's chosen. I think they're data-driven, I think they're terrific, and they're the ones we need. Certainly, financials are important. I think the one that became clearer to me in the last twenty-four hours, watching B-Space, is how important real estate expertise will be. I think I had potentially prioritized that a little bit higher after last night, understanding the scope of real estate development needs that we're going to be having. So I think I had put financial experience much higher than real estate before last night, and now they're a little bit closer in my mind. So that's, for whatever that's worth. I do think that one piece of the charge is understanding what will the impact be if the override fails. You've asked us to do that, which I think is an important piece of our charge. And so, understanding that, that probably will not be borne solely by the schools, it's sort of an important, it can't be borne only by the schools, it's sort of an important piece of the charge to think about the service levels that we enjoy in Brookline and what would happen overall. So I think the four categories are critical. And then I think the last thing, which is a really critical overlay again, is you look at the final group that you're planning to finally vote as the committee members, is the idea that it looks like Brookline. And there are a few different ways to think about that. It could be age, it could be gender, it could be ethnic diversity, there are a variety of ways to do that. But I guess sort of the principles of balance and as you look across the committee. So I very much endorse the idea of, you know, free and open-ranging conversation of people's skills according to the four categories. I mean, my instinct says it would be easier to vote a slate than to vote individually, but obviously, that's your choice, and I'm here to support you in any, in any way that would be useful. But I'm also recognizing the lateness of the hour and how important it is to get this, to get this right and done, so we can get on the way.
Okay. Selectman Benka, do you have?
Sure. I really don't have much to add, other than to say that this, this is really the first time this board has done this sort of a process with this kind of a committee. The B-Space Committee was just appointed. The override study committee in 2008 was picked by the town administrator at the time, rather than having a public call for volunteers and interviews and a selection after that sort of process. And it, I think that what it's done is it really has brought people to the table who probably would not have otherwise been identified. And I think it's been healthy because it has accomplished that. I think it has made, as everybody has said, made this extraordinarily difficult. And I think, as Susan said, I think it is going to be easier to vote groups where somebody has thought about achieving that balance. I think if, you know, we could do it individually, and the, who knows what would happen. So I really thank the town administrator for his efforts to try to achieve the balance, to try to get the skill sets that are significant, to try to, as Susan said, find a committee that reflects the town, reflects its various populations and its various interests. I know that it hasn't been easy, and I do thank you for that. Mr. Kleckner.
Okay. Selectman Daley.
Yes. Well, I want to say, first of all, that I was astonished with the people that came forward and their level of expertise. I think, you know, I could have voted for any of them. It was a great group of people, and it was just a, you know, tribute to the citizens of Brookline, that so many people were willing to commit substantial chunk of their time and their considerable expertise to this effort. And I appreciate very much the town administrator going through, and he's put together a proposed group of names, and which, which, you know, does achieve balance in a number of skill sets and people and characteristics and so forth and so on. But I feel that while I'm largely in agreement, I'm not 100% in agreement with it. And therefore, I would like to suggest that we vote individually, that we vote by ballot for candidates, having taken all the time to interview them. I think that it would be, you know, make the whole process very open and transparent, and I would like to propose that, that we vote by ballot.
Okay. Well, I think, let's see if anybody else has a comment, but I would take that perhaps as a motion to vote by ballot, which we will vote up or down, and then we'll decide whether we will accept the, one or, we have two groups, Group A and Group B, that the town administrator has proposed for us. Does that make everybody comfortable? Take a motion to vote by ballot, and then we'll vote it up or down, and then we'll see whether we're in agreement with the town administrator's groupings?
And I'm going to say that I agree with Selectman Daley's motion. I think balloting is the way to assure transparency. And as difficult as I know the task was for Administrator Kleckner, I'm not, and I've seen the list of eleven, and I'm not, I think that there's at least two people missing from that list, so I might have another idea to do if this balloting idea does not work.
Okay. All right. And I'm just going to say, for the record, I gave a lot of thought to how to do a ballot, and while, and the town administrator and I debated back and forth a number of procedures and methodologies.
And we should say that the town administrator was on vacation while he had to go through all of this.
That's right. And he did, he did, he did actually communicate with people from, while he was away on vacation. I was not comfortable or satisfied with any of the, well, how do I put this? I believe in ballots, but my fear or concern here is that in order for us to achieve the balance, that I do believe is important, and coming from the experience with B-Space teamwork, it's very hard to accomplish that with individual ballots and have an outcome that will reach what was possible through the town administrator. And so, anyway, that's my concern, how we would go through a balloting process.
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with the chair on this one. I don't know, if I was voting individually, I wouldn't vote, I might vote a different set of names in some instances, but I think to, what we have before us is kind of a careful balance of names, looking at different factors, and I think the proposal is a committee that I think would be a very good, balanced, credible committee that I would be proud to appoint. And I kind of like a more controlled process that gets us there.
Okay. So we're ready to have a motion? Selectman Daley has moved that we select the members of the override study committee by ballot process. So I'm going to offer her the chance, she's making the motion.
Yes.
And therefore, I will take a vote. So all in favor of Selectman Daley's motion, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
No.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky.
No.
And the chair votes no. So I think we will now move to a consideration of the recommendations made by our town administrator to provide us with groups whose qualifications meet the criteria that we had asked him to consider. There are two. One is a group of eleven, and one is a group of thirteen. I suppose we could discuss whether you want a larger or smaller group, and/or any other comments people like to make.
Can I say, I'd like to propose that we hear the group of eleven, and then, before we hear the group of thirteen, I have two suggestions of people to add to the group of eleven.
Okay. In other words, you would consider?
I would consider the group of eleven.
Additions to, up to thirteen?
That's right.
With different?
I would consider two additions that may not be on the list of thirteen.
Okay, that's all right. I can listen to that. Are we, are we comfortable? Shall we read out the names, and then you can make a suggestion about additions that might be acceptable to the board? Is that okay with everybody? I don't want to move too quickly. All right. From the group of candidates, we have as recommendations for the override study committee, Alberto Chang, who is a person with economic modeling background, is a CPA and has experience in forensic auditing. We have Chad Ellis, who is a town meeting member, I think from precinct four.
Twelve.
Twelve, thank you, Selectman Daley, sorry about that. Town meeting member from precinct twelve, and a small businessman entrepreneur, and who professes to understand product development and financial analysis and what?
And mediation.
And he's a mediator, yes! I was going to say that, right.
And a school parent.
And he's a school parent, which is a good thing. Ms. Janet Gelbart, who has experience as a financial officer in a number of not-for-profit organizations. She is retired and professed, I think, to have a lot of time available, and so she would bring financial analytical skill sets, and no children in the schools. Michael Glover, who is an attorney, works for the Mass Department of Transportation, has experience with municipal bonding, and also real estate project planning, and I believe is a parent, or if he's not an actual parent, he is a proto-parent. I can't remember whether he had preschool kids.
I think he had maybe some kids in the preschool program.
Yeah, I think he's got a preschool, right.
Proto-parent.
Well...
I'm not even going to ask.
Forget it. I was, I don't think he's, I don't think his children are enrolled in K-28.
A parent of young children.
Parent of young children, thank you. All right. Parent of young children.
Proto-parents sound kind of histristic.
Yeah. Okay, all right. All right. So, and then the next person is Carol Cayman, a woman who used to live around Boston, moved to the state of Arizona, has experience in state government administration in Arizona, extensive experience with child education and children's welfare, has headed her own not-for-profit child welfare organization, and served on a school committee in a community in Arizona, which apparently had similar enrollment growth problems as Brookline, and does not currently have school-aged children.
No, but she's been back in this area, I think, for six years, working, insulting educational issues.
Yeah, she's been around for a while, yeah, right. She's got good, strong local roots, she just doesn't have school-aged children anymore. Kevin Lang, who is familiar to everyone as a former school committee member and chair, but incidentally is a professor of economics at Boston University, who does economic modeling and analysis, and has done some specific projects looking at educational models and public financing. Next is Carol Levin, who has experience with real estate development and currently consults with hospitals for, on real estate projects. She is a parent at Runkel School.
Well, the kids are, the kids are out of school.
Kids are out of school, okay. So she was. She has a history as a school parent in Brookline. The next person is Sergio Modigliani, also does no longer have kids in school, but when he did, they were at Driscoll and went through the high school. He's trained as an architect, but he's also had experience with major project planning and, oh, come on, what am I trying to say? Energy, he's done a lot of planning around projects with energy conditions, energy issues, technological energy questions.
Member of the Brooklyn.
And he's a member of the planning board currently. He's the former chair of the advisory committee and former member, and maybe even chair of the preservation commission. So he's got lots of local knowledge. The next person is Lee Selwyn, who's professional, who has no longer children, but his kids went to Heath and the High School. He is a utility telecom analyst, also an econometrics analyst, and a town meeting member from precinct thirteen, and a member of the advisory committee. So he brings a wealth of town knowledge. Next person is Beth Jackson Stram, who is a consultant, who does both financial consulting and program consulting for not-for-profits, and also was active in the Commonwealth's application for federal funding for a program whose name, of course, I've forgotten right now.
Race to the top. Sorry? Race to the top.
Race to the top, thank you very much. So knowledge, financial background, and also about education and public education. And finally, Timothy Sullivan, who is the CFO of Mass Housing, but had a former life in state government in Massachusetts, experience with capital planning and analysis, is a Brookline High School graduate, and has kids at Baker School. And I think that gets me to eleven.
So I'd like to move that we accept the state of eleven, but the slate of eleven with the names listed, but that we increase it to a slate of thirteen, and that we add two names to that, who I think are both people that should be considered. One is James Sturgis, who I feel that this is, based on his professional experience, is more directly in his immediate wheelhouse than almost anybody that we interviewed. And the other person would be Cliff Brown, who is on EDAB, who is a parent in the school systems, who has real estate development experience, and who I, you know, I know to be a very hard-working, intelligent person, and a welcome addition to this. So I'd like to consider that.
I'm a little unhappy that you didn't put another woman on. I'm not pleased about the balance, I have to tell you.
Well, that would give us, let's, let's see what the count is.
You've got four women and you added two men. Just, you know, statistically, I can tell you that out of the total applicants, we had twenty-two men and eight women, and that's not a good percentage, since there's 51% of us in the population.
But I think we're beating the, we're beating the proportion of applicants.
You've got other good, qualified women who could be added.
I would, I would note that the town administrator's alternative slate added Cliff Brown and added Lisa Seraphin Sheehan. It added...
Right.
And I, let me, let me just say that I think, obviously, you want to look for a committee that reflects the town, but, and you do want balance. So I personally would be happy to have Mr. Sturgis, I'd be happy to have Cliff Brown on the committee, I'd be happy to have Lisa Seraphin Sheehan on the committee.
Well, my preference is for the group that the town administrator proposed, because I find that five out of thirteen is not even... I find that five out of 13 is not even close to 50%, but it's a better proportion.
Well, I would move slate B, which includes Mr. Brown, who I've worked with and have a lot of respect for, and to maintain the balance with Ms. Sheen.
As a co-chair of this committee, I'd be happy with slate A, with slate A with additions, with slate B.
You're going to have to vote.
I know, I'll vote, but, you know, I.
Well, I've made, I've made the motion, so I'd like to.
Okay, I think we can do A with amendments, that's fine, and then we'll take up, if that one passes, then that's it. If it doesn't, we'll do B. I just, I just want to mention, I had another name, but Thomas Downs, who's a professor at Tufts University, who's, who's economics, who works in the area of financing public education, I thought was an extremely strong candidate. But I agree that Jim Sturgis and Cliff Brown are also very good.
Are you inclined to go along with Selectman Goldstein?
Yeah, I, I, I just, I can't believe we're passing up Mr. Downs, but I am willing to go with.
As we said, we had an abundance of highly qualified people, it's tough choices. Tough choices. All right, then.
I, I know that you feel strongly about Lisa Seraphin Sheen, or maybe not strongly, but.
I feel strongly about a couple of things. One is the proportion of insiders versus outsiders, and I think on slate B, I counted it almost half, or over a third, between a third and a half insiders, which seemed high to me. I think that, as I said, last night, real estate became a little bit more important to me than it had previously, so to the extent that we are trading off finance and real estate, I would trade up on real estate after last night. So, those would, if that, if that means, I mean, and I think, anyway, let me leave it at that.
All right. Just procedurally, I'm going to take Selectman Goldstein's suggestions as an amendment to Group A, and we'll vote the amendment first, and then if that fails, we can vote Group A, and if that fails, we'll vote Group B. Is that everybody comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay. Then I think we need to proceed, unless there's something else somebody wants to add.
So, what's, what's, I'm sorry.
We're going to start by voting on the two names, Sturgis and Brown, as amendments to Group A. Then if that passes, you've got Group A with two additional names. If it fails, we will vote Group A with no additions, and if that fails, we'll vote Group B. Are we all clear? Are we happy with that? Is that fair and reasonable?
That is.
Okay. Then the first thing would be Selectman Goldstein's motion to add two names, James Sturgis and Cliff Brown, to Group A. All in favor of that amendment, you say aye, Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
No.
And I vote no. But it passes, so you've got it.
Well, I think.
Well, now we have to vote, vote the whole slate, okay? Fine, sorry.
May not happen.
As we do have, I'm sorry, I wasn't planning not to, I'm just saying it passes.
Sorry.
All right. So what we've got now.
Yeah, how many women are on this one, then?
This one now has four women out of 13.
Thank you. That doesn't, I mean, to the extent that anyone's asking, that doesn't sound acceptable to me.
Bad ratio. Bad ratio when you have qualified women. It is a misogynist position. I'm sorry, I'm tired and candid.
Come on, misogynist is.
You can choose an equally qualified woman, that's a better way of putting it. Okay, so we now have the amended Group A with the addition of two names, all in favor of the amended Group A. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
No.
And I vote no. Passes three to two. All right, that's the group. And that concludes the Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, August 13.